Session this morning, if I could ask everybody to find a seat. Please. Good morning, Mark Wester. We have for the first hour of our working session this morning a presentation on or from or about or
With.
Adult Protective Services. So, Mark, if you would introduce your guests and just start.
Sure. Good morning, my name is Mark Wester. I'm directly at the office as chairman of the Act of Independence here at CDHS. And with me is Mindy Kim. And she is the Division Director for Adult Defining Services and which includes Adult Protective Services. And today, we are presenting an overview of our Adult Protective Services Program in the initial patients of House Bill 171284. Before I turn it over to Mindy, I wanted to share with you the purpose of House Bill 171284. The intent of the bill was to quote minimize the potential for employment of persons with a history of mis-treatment of at-risk adult in positions that would allow those persons unsupervised access to these adults. The bill was one of five bills the department sponsored last legislative session. And the bottom line, and for those of us who have worked in the IDB or long-term care system for a number of years know there were, there are cases in which abuse neglect happens that are just on our body. And as a result, there's a substantiation or unsubstantiation. And no one knows that that happens except the employer. And so that information has been, uh, there's been limited sharing of that information. We were becoming aware of situations where at-risk adults was mistreated at a facility by a staff person, fired by that facility, which is common after such an incident. No criminal investigation or conviction resulted, so the person ended up working at another facility with at-risk adults. So that's some of the context behind what the, what, uh, House Bill 1284 did to shore up the gap in that information shift. From my own experience, I've seen examples of this. And it's part of operations, day-to-day operations in IDB and long-term care systems. We've had, uh, we have some examples to highlight in the presentation as well as from actual APS cases. So I really believe it's important for you to understand kind of, here's some of the details of some sample cases that for whatever reason didn't meet a criminal standard, did not be prosecuted. But still, you'll see that the examples were serious. The bill was an effort to resolve this by requiring certain employers to request a check of the APS database before they hire someone who will provide direct care to the at-risk adult. We hope this presentation gives you a little more context to the rules. We will be presenting to you later today and over the next couple of months. We also hope it gives you the better context of the actual operations of the Adult Protective Services System that is ongoing now in every county across the state. I'm gonna turn it over to Mindy and, uh...
Hi, Miss Kim. Yeah, please, yeah, absolutely. Where's yours?
Oh, is there? Good morning, everyone. We have a bunch of guests today. So I'm excited to be here to share with you a little APS 101. We did a similar presentation actually on March 8th for our group of stakeholders. And so we're tailoring this a little bit today to things that you might be interested in. But this is kind of the background of the APS program. I know you all probably received the PowerPoint and you probably noticed there's a lot of slides here. So I wanted to say upfront that there are probably some parts that we'll kind of skip through. I don't think we need to, you know, you don't need to have me read definitions to you and things like that. But we wanted to make sure you had the materials in your packet to reference. And so we'll try and hit on the key points and I'm open to addressing any questions or the feedback that you have during the presentation of the board members. But just know that there's a lot of material here and expect your reference. That said, um, the APS program in Colorado has actually been around since 1983. When it started, it was, um, the target population was older adults 65 and older. But then in 1991, the statute was changed to institute a definition of at-risk adults, which is 18 plus at-risk adult standard. We'll talk in a little, in a few slides about what that definition is currently for APS. And then off note, in terms of regulation, in 2016, the Administration for Community Living adopted federal voluntary guidelines for APS. So some of you may know other programs in the city that does have federal requirements. APS does not. There's no federal APS program or funding or anything. It's all each individual state. But there are now these guidelines that give us a little bit of what do other states do in this area? What are best practices? So we often try to refer to those. So there's been some recent state legislation. So even though APS has been in place since 1982, it's changed a lot in recent years because of a couple of key things. So mandatory reporting was added to the Colorado criminal statutes in 2014, it was actually 2013, but we started it July 1st, 2014. So what that means is there's certain professionals, it's a very long list, healthcare professionals, people who work in human services, things like that, that are now required by law to report to law enforcement if they observe mistreatment of an at-risk adult. And so in 2014, it was just at-risk elders, which is 70 and older. But then in 2000, uh, July 1st, 2016, that started to include at-risk adults with IDB. And so one thing we wanted to note here is that it's a little confusing because the definitions of who you have to conduct a mandatory report on are different than who we can screen in as APS client. So you, as a mandatory reporter, you would have to report on somebody 70 or older or an 18 or older with IDB. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that APS is gonna screen that case in. So if you're capable of making decisions, of getting services in place, just because you're 70 doesn't mean APS is gonna take you on as a case. So we'll get into that a little bit more when we talk about the screening and process, but... And then the other change that Mark mentioned to open this up is the CAPS check bill. That was a bill that passed last legislative session. The department was very involved in advocating for that. And we'll talk a little bit more about that again. And so this is the actual language from statute related to mandatory reporting. Again, I just wanted it here for your reference that it's observing the mistreatment of an at-risk elder or at-risk adult with IDB and reasonable cause to believe that that person has been mistreated or is in imminent risk. And again, it gets a little, little tricky, but statute requires the mandatory reporter to report to law enforcement. They can also call APS if they want to, but they're not required by law to. However, it does require law enforcement to transfer that report, to basically forward that report, the information from that report to APS within 24 hours. And then if for some reason APS gets a report that doesn't go to law enforcement, they have to forward that to them within 24 hours. It's a little tricky, I'm not gonna lie. And then again, for your reference, here is the legislative declaration from House Bill 171284. So you can see that the language in here really talks about protecting vulnerable adults. And that was the intent of, of that bill. Any questions so far on the board on this?
Mindy, just jumping back one slide. The requirement is that mandatory reporting needs of law enforcement. Does law enforcement first decide whether or not there is a level of criminality that warrants their investigation before passing it on to APS? Or does that pass on to APS after irrespective of law enforcement's evaluation as to criminality?
That's a great question. So they are just required to forward the report. They're not, they're not supposed to assess it or determine. So, because it could be an either and/or situation. It could be something they choose to investigate criminally or not. And it could be something that APS would screen in or not. But regardless, they're just required to forward the report.
That's interesting to me because I... Why then, if you know, you didn't have to know, why does the bill?
Right.
Why then does the call not just go to APS for the mandatory reporting? Why first the law enforcement, if you know?
I have a little sense. It's a little speculation. But I think there were some advocates in the law enforcement and DA community that really wanted the report to go to law enforcement first to give them the opportunity so that they would get all mandatory reports straight and they would see them all. And then they would have the opportunity to decide whether they were gonna screen it. And it still requires them essentially. Yes, but they want to. So there's, there's two main parts of this. And we're gonna obviously get into this when we talk about the whole packet later. But the first part of the CAPS check bill is requiring the CAPS check. So January 1st of 2019, all, a certain group of employers will have to request a check from us of their CAPS database when they're hiring somebody who's gonna do direct care of at-risk adults to see if that person's been substantiated in APS case. That's, that's the big piece. The other big piece that we're, we have in a little packet too, that you'll hear this afternoon or later today, is the due process. So in order to do these CAPS checks, we need a due process system in APS that we don't currently have. And so I know you heard about that last month, but that's, those are the two main pieces of this. We wanted to provide for you a few examples of substantiated treatment in APS case by care providers that work in facilities. So you can get a sense of, you know, once due process is effective, these people will have due process rates. And then once those CAPS checks are effective, if one of these people, you know, in these type of situations, apply for job at a facility, information on their substantiation would be provided to that employer when they request the check. So an example of physical abuse is a care provider who intentionally branded an at-risk adult instead of touching tongs, causing severe burns and scars. An example of caretaker neglect, a care, uh, care provider was intoxicated while transporting clients with IDB and was arrested for a DUI while the client was in the vehicle. So these are the things that are happening out there in our facilities, in our communities across Colorado. It's not frequent. There are many wonderful people that work with our vulnerable adults, right? And we have thousands and thousands. These are very rare circumstances, but they do happen. And so that's sort of underscoring the intent of the CAPS check bill. To make sure that when a provider is hiring somebody to do the very important work of working with at-risk adults, that they have this information. The CAPS check will not give this level of information. So I know you probably saying, oh wow, that's a lot of information to give the employer. You'll, you'll hear that next month in the packet free. But essentially, all the information the employer would get is the date of the finding, the county in which it was located, whether it was physical abuse, caretaker neglect, or exploitation. I think that's a basic term. And if you pass those severity levels to it, it'd be very low. Okay. So now we talk a little bit about APS generally. As you know, it's a state-supervised, county-administered program, similar to several other programs.
Sorry to tie you up.
Yeah, no, no.
So with respect to, uh, so under that physical abuse, it says a care provider. Is there, is that, uh, some kind of sanction provider? Or is that, uh, you know, family member who was, you know, in charge of figures being, being quite from the family perspective, in charge of caring for that adult?
Right. So these are all examples from people who are working for a facility or agency. But obviously, this is possible to happen in a family context.
And it weren't to happen in a family context, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about the employer scenario. But in a family context, it would still get sent through the system. It just wouldn't be in the employer side of it, correct? I mean, it would be reported by, to the police, the police report to local APS, and then the local APS would do their investigation, et cetera. Just wouldn't necessarily go through the CAPS system.
Um, so it would still...
Excuse me, the employer part of it.
Right. So it would still be in the CAPS system if it was substantiated, it would be in there. And then if for some reason, you know, three years from now, that person decided, oh, I wanna work in a facility, it would still be there. So even though it didn't happen in a facility side.
It'd still get caught.
Right, thank you. Okay, so state roles. We do all the program, policy, oversight, monitoring, quality assurance, technical assistance type stuff. We have a pretty small group to do this with. Our APS staff, Peg Rogers is here, manager of that unit. And then we have some specialists and staff that help support our data system, work directly with counties, provide technical assistance to them, do all their training. So there's seven of us here at this building that do that for the whole state. And then we also have Mark MacRae with us in the back of the room. And Mark oversees the administrative review division. And they have just received funding this year for quality assurance staff specific for the APS program. So they kicked off their reviews, um, last month, yeah. And they, they have some visit needed staff.
Well, okay, I'd like to ask a question on that also as it relates to APS, state APS staff. Do those staff typically have some experience in a county APS system as well?
Great question. We really look for that when we're hiring folks to do our policy and training work. And also I hope that a quality assurance staff lead look for that. It's not a requirement, right? Because somebody could potentially be wearing the program. But it's, I'm pretty sure everyone we have on our staff, not everyone.
So two of my specialists were key workers in the APS program. One from Denver County, one from Rapahe County. And then the third person has had a decade of experience in the IDB system at a community center.
Yeah, so it's, it's high on our list, but it's not a yet. In terms of our state quality assurance, we have been doing quality assurance, obviously, of the APS program and the county's administration of it for a long time. It's in our rules. And we do it on the state level a couple of different ways. We look at specific target measures. So for example, are they meeting all their training requirements? Are they screening in cases appropriately? We also, in broad care, do a formal case review or do a consult on cases. And then we obviously have CSTAT managers, where those are your standard CSTAT process. But now ARD has taken on the role of formal quality assurance in each county. So they're gonna try and hit every county for your time, give or take a little bit. And, um, and we've done a few counties so far. It's, it's been very successful. I think that's a good feedback to the counties. Go ahead.
What's your CSTAT target and how have you been scoring?
Sure. So one of, one of the measures for CSTAT is timeliness of monthly contact. So our rules state that a caseworker needs to see a client once a month. We have just increased our goal on that measure statewide to 95% from 90%. And we're hovering around 94. We've hit 95 a few paths. So for the most part, caseworkers are seeing, you know, clients once a month. They're required very rarely. We do dive in if there's a county or a caseworker group who has, you know, a significant amount that they haven't seen. We kind of dive into that data for, um, to see if there are any issues. And we typically find it's things like they made multiple attempts to see the client and the client wasn't there. Or sometimes the client has passed away because we're dealing with elderly folks and they just didn't close that case in time. So it gets captured in that data, things like that.
And what was the impetus behind moving the, the goal up?
Um, so if we were at 90%, we were hitting it every month. And most counties were hitting it on their county level. And so Reggie likes to challenge, as you all know, and so he challenged us and the counties to be hitting 95%. So that's where we're at.
If I could jump in, part of the context behind that is if our role is to make sure we see clients in those safety measures in place, we wanna be timely in that and as close to perfect as we can in a 95% goal.
So if, if it turns out that, like, you're always gonna, 94 is the best you're gonna be able to do because 5% of the people have passed, I mean, if that's always your... Like, if that's always why cases aren't being met, it just seems like having achievable goals is different than just setting a higher goal, because it's...
And we have, we have hit the 95 a couple of months. Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but, so it's, it's achievable. It's just, you know, some months there's more of those situations than others. That's why we don't make the 100%, because we know that there's gonna be situations like that.
So I'm just more than clarifier. Can you talk about customer contact? In the context of this particular set of issues in APS and the CAPS, is there some special expectation that we've made or that you're contemplating making these a D, folks who have been subject to, I'm a little confused. Maybe I jumped down a rabbit hole. You guys are still going straight, but I don't know. Trying to sort out the relationship of which, all of it you just said with the APS.
Sure. I think it will become a little more clear as we talk about the life of an APS patient.
All right, come on.
Yeah, yeah, so... All right, we're gonna skip... So we're gonna jump ahead to the county role, just to kind of keep improving a little bit. As you can see, here are all the things that the counties do. They really are out there doing the hard work of the APS program, they're administering the program. Everything from screening in cases to doing investigations to doing assessments. But we'll walk through this in a few slides of what this process looks like. So APS staff qualifications, again, this is here mostly for your reference. These are in the rules. So if you go online, you get the full APS rules and then the CVs in there. Here are all the things that staff on the county level need to be qualified to do the APS program. And then here are the types of training things. It's not an exhaustive list, but just sort of an overview of the types of things. We have a workbook that we require the caseworkers to go through. It's actually an online training module now. We have a five-day training academy that July 1st will become an eight-day training academy that they have to complete. And then we have a new training on, specifically on investigations that is a result of the CAPS check bill to make sure that they're consistently conducting investigations. And then we have ongoing training throughout the year, a variety of different ways that APS caseworkers get training on specific topics and those sorts of things. And we could, obviously, if anyone's particularly interested in something like this, we can have a one-off conversation about it first. Okay, so we're onto the eligible population. This is what the definition in statute is for at-risk adults. It's people 18 and older who are susceptible to mistreatment or self-neglect because they're unable to perform or obtain necessary services for their health, safety, or welfare, or they lack sufficient understanding or capacity to make or communicate responsible decisions regarding their personal rights. So this is what I was referring to earlier as a mandatory reporter needs to report suspected mistreatment of someone 70 or older, for example, an at-risk elder. They may not meet this definition. So that report will go to law enforcement. Law enforcement will forward it to APS. APS still has to do the work of determining if this is an at-risk adult. If it's not an at-risk adult per this definition, they screen the case out. It doesn't become, or the report out, it doesn't become a case. So now you kind of understand the different types of report when a report is made and then whether or not that's screened in and becomes a case. A case is when an investigation is done, an assessment is done. So here's some data. As you can see, we've trended up a lot because of mandatory reporting. So the blue is the reports we receive in each of the past few fiscal years. And the red are the cases that we've opened in those last few fiscal years.
Curious, um, how many of the, how many of the cases are people that are in fact 65 or older? How many of the cases are people that go that in?
So we have a slide on that a little bit, but I, uh, about 70... Let's wait till that slide.
All right.
So I don't... The other thing I will note is that the ratio of reports to those that are getting screened in is changing a little bit. So before mandatory reporting, we had about 50 to 60% of the reports actually got screened in, became a case. That's lower now. That's closer to 37% of getting screened in. Because when you require somebody to report, there's that tendency to over-report, right? Like just in case. So we are getting statewide, you'll hear from counties often, that they get some reports that just don't rise to the level of becoming a case. Okay, here's, here's some client risk factors again for your reference. These are the types of things that are conditions that make somebody susceptible for mistreatment or neglect. And you can see some of the, some of the bigger conditions that are part of this is older adults, usually who are medically fragile, frail elderly, and those with dementia and Alzheimer's are the contributors to our at-risk adults.
So, so Mindy, if I can just clarify for the board, these are the reasons that they would screen in and for defining it as an at-risk adult, right?
So they're, yeah, it's a little more nuanced, um, they're contributing factors. So again, you could have somebody with very early stages of dementia, Alzheimer's, and they're fully, they don't meet that at-risk definition. They're fully capable of still caring for themselves. So we wouldn't screen that in. But as you get into more advanced levels of dementia and Alzheimer's, that's when they do come, need the definition.
This, this slide possibly, is this the predominant or most significant factor? Because especially with the elderly, you have dementia, frail elderly, medically fragile, physical impairment. There may, there may be six of these things.
Right.
But it adds up to 100%.
Exactly.
It adds up to 110.
What?
I'm sorry.
That's a doctorate, Dave, for sale?
I may have missed something, so I'll shut up.
Right. So somebody can have, in fact, about almost half of our clients with, uh, for APS have two or more of these risk factors.
So this is...
The 100%.
This is the number one factor.
Um, no, these are all the factors. So if you were to take all the, all the conditions and then divide them up, so somebody could be counted twice in here. Yeah, I know. Okay, again, I'll keep your stats though. I knew it was coming up. So as you can see here, 18 to 59 is 25%. So about 75% of APS clients are over age 16. And that 18 to 59 includes folks like individual with traumatic injury or early onset Alzheimer's or an adult with IDB. So it's a varying of different things. And then you can see our APS clients last year were a little more female represented than male. And then there's about 18% of APS clients are living in a facility. So that would be like a nursing unit. But a lot of, a majority of... But a lot of, majority of them are actually, it makes me the living about. And when you see that data a little bit, um, if I go to the web on self-neglect, you realize that, um, a good number of our APS cases are actually self-neglect. So that's, that's typically your older adult living in your own home. A neighbor calls me, goes, "I'm worried about CD, she was fine a couple months ago, she's starting to fail." You know, some stuff to go with that.
So on the, uh, um, client living arrangements, uh, graph, I find pretty upsetting, honestly, that one out of five reports of a piece are, uh, maltreatment come out of care facilities. Who, is that a, who supervises that, or whose, which department oversees facilities? And does it depend on what facility it is?
It does. Um, typically, CDPH overseas, things like nursing homes, services of the name. Beth has authority over some types of facilities, CDPS does.
Yeah, if I can, um, kind of underscore some of that. So the licensed facility licensed by the state of Colorado, normally that is licensed through, um, public health and environment. And then if, for instance, like IDV providers, um, like post homes and, uh, personal care alternatives and, uh, day services are not licensed by CDPH, that they're overseen by healthcare policy and finance through the Division for Intellectual Development and Disabilities. And so, um, that's their oversight. Long-term care, of course, is overseen both, um, federally as well as CDPH ICF programs. They also have federal regs, um, and CMS has oversight. And, uh, also the state regs also apply in their license. So there's, uh, pretty strict reporting requirements for a licensed facility. And, uh, and in the IDV system, the, the reporting goes to CCDs and over to healthcare policy finance.
So what's the goal for that?
Well, this, one of the things that...
I mean, is, are the metrics you say, I mean, is eighteen percent the right number of, I mean, is it inevitable that you're gonna have eighteen percent of your, uh, cases coming out of, and I may not use the word cases technically correctly, but, you know, purpose of that slide, is it the right number? That eighteen percent should be coming out of facilities that are designed to protect people and take care of them?
And this is our experience, like this is actual data, if I'm correct, maybe?
Right, and just, just to clarify that point. So, um, we'll talk a little bit about the report, um, reports screening in process. So we, at the county level, the APS staff, all they do is take their reports, decide whether or not to screen it in. If they screen it in, they attract a case. So we don't have any control over, you know, the facilities or anybody out in the world of what, what happens. We are just responsible and just ask for responsible reports. I would say, you know, philosophically, it's since mandatory reporting has started, um, we have seen an increase in reports and we've seen an increase in cases. So it may be a good thing that people are reporting more or, you know, that those are, those are getting investigated by APS. So I, I wouldn't necessarily say we want numbers to go down, right? The fact that actually, you know, if people are just not reporting.
Sure, I'm just, but my, I mean, it strikes me that one out of five, is this quantifying reports or is this quantifying cases?
Cases.
So it still strikes me, so case is, is sort of, is more of a sign of a problem than a report. It still strikes me as one out of five report, one out of five cases comes out of an institution that's responsible for taking care of these people. Seems like too high a number to me.
And this is only licensed facilities?
No.
It says facility.
Okay, so, yeah, it says facilities, that's why I was clarifying, is this is licensed facilities and non-licensed like post home and IDV care providers. So it's a fine distinction, like a licensed facility would be an IDV group home that is licensed by CDPH and also overseen by a provider, but there are a number of services being provided that are not, they are program-approved services through healthcare policy and finance, but they're not licensed by CDPH.
And we could, um, so we can, we can get you the data on what...
I don't need you to know the data, I'm just saying, yeah, that seems wrong.
Right.
That seems too high.
And...
And I understand it's not, you're just, you're just reporting, but from a state level, that seems too high.
And, and that's what this CAPS check bill tries to capture is that number of those cases that don't reach a criminal standard. And when you think about an IDV, um, individual or a dementia, uh, patient group, it's very hard to interview the client at times. Then are you going to make them take the witness stand? You, you know, there's a lot of challenges to the criminal aspect, but at the same time, facilities are a long time. Uh, and APS workers know and establish, is it more likely or not happen? And that's what substantiation is. Yeah, it's more likely that it happened than it did. And that's, that's what we're trying to capture. In a, in kind of the provider world, you don't, you're constantly looking at this and trying to make sure that your, your clients are safe and monitoring your staff so that things don't happen, that they still incidents like, like the examples we shared do happen.
What's the number, what's about the, the actual number of high cases last year?
Uh, I'll refer to the guy.
It's a little...
Nine, nine thousand.
Pieces, yeah. Um, so in the interest of time, I am gonna kind of, let's just skip over the definitions, but again, they are there for your reference, and these are, um, directly from the statute. So mistreatment, when we talk about mistreatment in the APS, um, program, it means abuse, inherently from neglect or exploitation. But then, as you saw, a large, um, number of our cases are actually self-neglect as well. So. Um, we used to use, and, um, I wanted to highlight some of our key principles in the APS program. Um, we talk about these a lot in training with APS staff, they're, they're very important. Um, this is one of the areas where you'll see a distinction between, um, other protection programs like child welfare and APS. Um, and so obviously confidentiality, these are adults. Um, they are at-risk adults, they're adult adults. Confidentiality is, is very important. The statutes for APS confidentiality are, um, pretty stringent. Um, and the statutes only require, only allow information on the APS that can be shared um, without a court order under very specific circum, circumstances. So typically, we need a court order to get a protection on APS case. And I know we've talked about this, this group before. Um, so consent, um, adults who have capacity to understand that we can provide records, we can offer protective services, but they can't...
It would seem that there would be a lot of subjectivity, maturity in consent. Does everybody do that in the same way?
Just written on A. Sorry. Yes, so the caseworker is, um, contingent on the base, of course, but caseworkers will get, um, that person's orientation, uh, if they're able to hold a conversation, make decisions, things are organized, they can balance their checkbook. There are some screening tools, like the slums, the mocha, the clocks, that APS caseworkers can use to kind of screen if they're kind of like thinking there may be some issues. They'll, uh, get medical records from doctors to see whether or not doctors are seeing any signs of compromise, um, positive function. Um, and then they could also have that person evaluated by a professional to have a professional say about them. And then self-determination is also kind of a massive percent. Um, so, um, adults who do accept, um, protective services, they still have the right to decide which ones they want to receive. So we could go into a house where, you know, um, there's self-neglect happening, there's a lot of, uh, mess or things like that. We can offer, hey, we can have somebody come out, and I can have one handy that has somebody to help me clean this up. And we can also take this furniture away. And they can say, we'll take the help cleaning up, but you're leaving the furniture, you know, those type of things. So, um, that's a key principle in, in the work of the APS caseworker. And then finally, like, the least restrictive intervention. Um, and this is in our rules that, um, we really wanna provide the least intrusive services, uh, for the client, and so we should also intervene for the shortest amount of time possible.
Can I just, uh, ask a question, Thomas? Did your, uh, question answer relative to consent? I just wanted to underscore that that last slide was, that's the philosophy and the priorities that drive APS work in the state. So self-determination, consent, if someone says, "Get out of my life, I don't want to care," they're out the door, right? They, they don't intervene. Least restrictive environment, least restrictive intervention, very consistent with person-centered, uh, care and principles. And, um, and so it's a delicate balance of caseworkers' walk between, hey, we're concerned about you, we wanna make sure that you're safe, and we wanna put systems, uh, services in place that are gonna make you safer. But we also wanna respect your dignity of person and dignity of nature.
Vinny, what, how long is, is the average length of a case? Great question. So I always get the stats when I have to birthday, but the majority of cases are closed within three months. About eighty-two percent are closed within three months. Um, about ninety-five percent are closed within six months, and ninety-nine percent are closed within a year.
Is there a, is there a, I don't know who to ask, is there a standard for that? Internally or externally?
There isn't, except for, um, sort of based on those principles, you know, least restrictive intervention, things like that. Um, and then we do have some, some stuff in our rules that's, um, pretty much when you, when you put services in place, close the case. You know, so there's no sort of set, okay, at three months you will close this or anything. But based on the principles and the guidelines and the rules, that's just how it works out. And if I can interject, the caseworker is going to look at, once they get services put in place, they're gonna spend a couple weeks, um, with that client still to make sure that those services are addressing the issue. And then when they know that those, yes, that's fixing the issue, it's a definite component of the case.
And I may be jumping ahead, I apologize. Um, how do, how do those data overlay onto your process map and the timing that's articulated around due process for care providers? So, so, so sorry, so the rule sort of capsulates a set of timeframes that, these are decision points, go, no, go, around the due process elements.
Right.
How do those timelines that you're experiencing with current cases interact well or not well with the process timelines that we're talking about?
Thank you. Um, I'll try.
Okay.
Don't lie. I'm trying. Um, so when, when, the, the only sort of key interaction point between an APS case and then when the due process is when, when a finding is made, um, is when that will initiate the due process. Once, once the finding is made, substantiated, then that will, based on the vote by the APS attorney later today, that will trigger the county to send a notice to the substantiated perpetrator to say, "You have due process rights. Here's the finding that's been made for you. Um, here's how to appeal it if you want to." That's really the only kind of interaction between, I know at the end of this one, we included a flow chart on how a case works, because we wanted to walk you through that. Then you also received a flow chart on due process and how that works. The only kind of main interaction point is when a finding is made in APS, then it will trigger the due process.
You may get to this later in your presentation, but to me, this is the point that, that was the, the angst that, discussions have been going on for the last several months, how? Folks are screening in, the allegations are substantiated, they're screened out. Yet they are not substantiated. Substantiated is, is that not correct?
No.
Okay.
Let me walk you through this slide and then, and then I think we'll...
That, that's where I'm trying to get my mind around it.
Yep.
Is that term is a little different than I'm used to.
Right.
I'm not sure how the subsequent process is evaluated to determine whether the substantiation was in fact accurate.
Right.
Too good or too bad?
Let me breeze through, breeze through these next several slides, we'll walk through the case, and then, if it's not clear, then we'll do questions, that's that.
Okay.
Okay. So when a report is made to APS, either it comes in from an individual making a report or it comes over from law enforcement, we either screen it or screen it out. Um, and so if it gets screened in, it has to be an at-risk adult for that definition, and there has to be a reason to believe that there's mistreatment or self-neglect. Um, so it can't be, hey, I stepped back, accidentally stepped on grandma's toe, I'm calling it a report because I mistreated her. Um, that doesn't meet the definition of mistreatment, so we would screen it out. Um, once it's screened in, it will become a case, and that's when we do an investigation, an assessment, and do some case planning. If it's screened out, then, um, the county can still refer them to other resources and services within the community.
So maybe just a comment, this is even, um, this is even less than sort of like a probable cause determination. This is just, do the allegations even fit our portfolio of what we do? Or is this a case that some other agency would have to investigate? It's not even determining the likelihood of the allegations being true. It's just, do the allegations fit the bucket that we happen to work on?
Thank you. I'm gonna use that, 'cause that was good.
Can I also, uh, make a quick comment? There's two aspects of it. Why does the investigation of who's, is there someone actively harming an at-risk adult? That's the investigation piece. The, the case planning, uh, let me look at, yeah, the key assessment, case planning, is how do we increase the safety for that at-risk adult, right? What can be put in place? So, for instance, it may be, hey, it may be engaging the family member, it may be addicts and services in-home, caretaker services, those type of things. So there's kind of two aspects. One is social working, the other one is what really happened here, and is it substantiated or not? So a substantiation would be a subset of screened-in in cases, right? There would be some that are unsubstantiated, screened-in cases, and some that are substantiated in the investigation portion.
And that's what we're gonna get to do next. Um, so the next couple of slides are actually what I said. Um, we look at what happened, and we look at information about the adult and deciding whether or not to screen the case in. Uh, we did wanna point out, because I, I've heard a couple of comments in the community recently, does APS go out and do a survey of facilities, remind them of inspections of facilities? That's not our role, right? Like, there are other state agencies that oversee licensed facilities, things like that. Um, we, at APS at the county level, just take their reports and do our, do our work with them.
Do you have any algorithms to, upon taking reports, go, wow, something's going on, that's why it's a facility, and then ask for the other agency to do an inspection?
Yes, um, you, you are like getting right for it now. As part of the investigation, we can conduct joint investigations, so, um, like with CDPH or other, other entities, yeah. Um, and so again, this is an overview of what the caseworkers do during an investigation. They interview a variety of people. Um, typically, they don't announce their visits, but, um, there are exceptions to that. Um, and typically, they try and interview, um, the client or at-risk adult alone. But again, if, if, um, the adult don't request to help somebody else there, we can do that too. The goal is really to get, is act, it's, it's an investigation to find out what happened, right? And we can't make a thorough and complete finding without kind of getting to the bottom of what happened. And then we also look at, um, the caseworker, we look at a variety of different documents as applicable. And this is where it's conducted jointly. And this is where it's conducted jointly, it could be the CCB or CPG or law enforcement that they're working collaboratively with. And then, once the investigation is complete, this is where, I think we were getting to a little bit earlier, is that the caseworker then evaluates all the evidences collected and determines whether the allegations, there's two things, the allegations, were they substantiated, unsubstantiated, or inconclusive? So, once the investigation or all of that information has been collected, that's when they make that. And the level of evidence in APS is a preponderance of evidence. And that's the same as it is in child welfare. It's the same as it is in the majority of other APS programs in the country. And it's also the same level of evidence as many other civil standards in Colorado. And so, at this point, the rules only require, we'll hear about this later, that the findings are discussed with the APS supervisor. But what we've included with the packet you'll be related today is that all findings will be approved by the supervisor before they're finalized. And that's sort of an additional measure of control that we wanted to put in the rules to make sure that, you know, there is somebody sort of confirming those findings and seeing if they're going to be taken into consideration. So, there is some data that we've included on what the findings actually look like. And this may be of interest to you because not all cases that are investigated are substantiated, right? There are some that are inconclusive or some that are unsubstantiated. So, of all the allegations last year, you can see the breakout of which ones, you know, how many were caretakers who had physical abuse and exploitation. And then, there's also self-neglecting here. Now, I will point out, we've gotten this question recently, oh, do you make a finding and substantiate on a person for self-neglecting? Are they the alleged perpetrator? We don't have that in APS. We obviously are not going to tell somebody you've self-neglected and, you know, you've been substantiated against yourself. And so, that's not a thing that we do. But what this is saying is, of the original allegation, was it, you know, a preponderance of evidence, was it substantiated or not?
So, I'm trying to, trying to make sure I know what difference in a report, than allegation in a case is. Is an allegation like a report or is it another category yet?
Exactly. So, when a report is made, somebody can, they can make several allegations. You know, I think this person is self-neglected, but I also think there's caretaker neglect. And I also think there's manipulation, right? So, the allegations are what they're saying is happening when they make their report.
So, I was just trying to do some numbers, so I can't automatically say there were twenty thousand reports. So, now, now I need to do the math and say how many sexual abuse allegations there were if it doesn't work. Got it?
Don't, but we may have some of that in our internal report, I forget the numbers.
Well, to use your, to use your frame, okay, there were ninety-one hundred cases screened in. So, the percentages here would be relative to that number.
Wow.
In terms of substantiation, these are substantiations, so you'd have to go even further.
Right, so it's one case has three allegations.
That's right. Out of ninety-one hundred, whatever percentage.
It's a new category.
Yeah, sorry, we have lots of.
That's okay, I was just trying to do it in my head.
Right.
Wouldn't be a waste of time.
Okay, now I'm getting confused again, which is hard. We've got, we turned out with nine thousand allegations. The language on the right hand side says thirty-two percent of all allegations were substantiated.
Do you have a number of allegations, because that's a different category.
So, so, about, there is an average of one point two allegations per case.
Right.
So, while there's nine thousand cases, there could be ten thousand allegations attached to those cases. Because a case could have multiple. You could have someone who is alleged to be neglecting and exploiting.
Sure, I get that.
So, when you're looking at the allegations data, we're looking at the total allegations, not the number of reports, not the number of cases.
Okay, but I would ask the question, the total number of cases opened?
Was about nine thousand last year.
Was about nine thousand. How many of those was one or more allegations substantiated?
I don't know the number. I just know that it's approximately one point two allegations per case when we average it out.
So, question, and then something that might help, Mr. Puscher. How many of the, so the nine thousand cases that were screened in, how many referrals or reports, I should say, were made that year?
About twenty thousand.
Okay, so out of twenty thousand people calling APS, that resulted in nine thousand cases being opened, involving about ten thousand allegations. The thirty-two percent applies to that ten thousand number, right? So, and that could be, in a single case, one allegation might be substantiated and another allegation might not be substantiated.
Correct.
So, they found, yeah, the caretaker neglected them, but they weren't exploiting, but they, you know, they were lazy, but they didn't actually like go through their finances and steal money. So, a single, that's why we look at allegations versus cases being substantiated because it could involve a both unsubstantiated and substantiated.
If I could follow up then, thirty-two percent applies to the ten thousand some odd total allegations. Meaning that, and that thirty-two percent could include two allegations against one single situation.
Yes.
So, it seems like the, out of the nine thousand cases that were originally opened, something in the range of three thousand go full.
Are substantiated and would be neglected, yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
So, this is dangerously extrapolative, but just punching my calculator with the benefit of the facts numbers. The top of the funnel is twenty thousand, that's what you said, right? That results in nine thousand cases. At one point two allegations per case, it's ten thousand eight hundred allegations, of which three thousand four fifty-six, about thirty-four, thirty-five hundred are substantiated.
And then I have.
Those are the, I mean, it's extrapolative, so take what it's worth, but those are the numbers.
And then let's skip, I think, to where you're going with this next is.
Right, maybe before you do that, just for the sake of the board, Alicia was kind enough to recognize that this is good, rich conversation. We do have another presentation we're gonna, in fact, postpone. That was the competency and restorations conversation with Dr. Fox and Robert Worthline, Dr. Fox and Dr. Worthline, in fact. So, we can continue going into this. I think this is good, rich conversation, certainly educational for me, so we're just going to keep on, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Alyssa, your math, thank you. And so, we got to, you know, how many allegations were substantiated, that's what we left off. This breaks it down a little further. And so, what we do is, we also identify with each, the number of perpetrators that, or alleged perpetrators, where a finding was substantiated on them. And this is what's going to play into those hash checks. So, if you look at the pie chart up in the right side, this is the relationship to the client. So, twenty-five percent were agency or professional, a large number were family members, some were community members. And then, if you're looking at this statistic of the number, of the twenty-five percent of people who were alleged to have created an at-risk adult, twenty-five percent were substantiated. So, a large number of those cases, what this means is, we open the case, once the report is made, we open the case, the caseworker does the investigation. And there are many times, a high number of times, when it's actually unsubstantiated or inconclusive. So, not every time an investigation is opened is the, then the individual, does it become a substantiated finding.
So, I'm curious if we have this kind of broad and multifaceted framework around at-risk, right? See if it's elder, some of it is medically compromised, some other things. And I think we've got the general category of IDD, is that correct? Or if I tried to.
So, we, I'm going to always bring us back when it's concerning APS to the at-risk adult definition.
Yes.
That we included, that I can never quote it exactly right. But that is the only criteria for APS screening a case. So, that could include, somebody with, an adult with IDD, an elderly person, you know, the whole, the whole range of old adult.
Yes.
But just because somebody needs one of those criteria or has one of those conditions, doesn't mean they meet the at-risk adult definition.
So, maybe more of the question that I think I was driving to is, I'm curious if you've done any significant breakdown between, if you look at either the substantiated allegations or the alleged perpetrators, if you see any huge outlier data sets that correlates family members with IDD? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Right.
Is there any trends that we really, that are worthy of digging into and either modifying rule policy? Or is this pretty straightforward, anyway you slice it, it's pretty standard?
So, we haven't, it's a good question, haven't been able to slice and raise the data like that. But I think it's something that we'll make a note of is, you know, I kind of see what your question is. Is there a relationship between the risk factors for the individual and the sort of mistreatment and the type of perpetrator or facility or category? We haven't.
But yeah, thank you for talking about the trans. But I'd like to interject a little bit because this bottom graph kind of shows that. It's not in the level of detail that I think we might be thinking about. But if you look, this is the rate of substantiation by the relationship of that perpetrator to the client. And so, when we look at like the DD system, forty-two percent of the alleged perpetrators who worked in our DD system were substantiated last year. And so, we do pass up relationship data around populations and who's doing the mistreating. Just not quite in the detail.
And when you say DD system, you're talking about direct care workers? People working at a group home, people working at a case manager.
Cross homes, yep.
It seems surprising to me that that's known to be so high. I'm just going to say, so who is unknown that you're just going to tell me?
So, and again, this is saying, of the perpetrator relationship that we identify as unknown, twenty-nine percent of those are substantiated and the other percent are not. So, it's not saying that the, this isn't showing the percentage of the abuse that are unknown. And so, it is actually a small number, smaller number, it's five percent.
Oh, okay.
But that would be things like a financial scam, right? We would never, you know, do a perpetrator risk in that or something.
Right.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, or someone sees something on the screen, disposable abuse, you had the person parked off, we can locate that person.
And this may be something that everybody's already on the same page on, but I think it's out of math major. I'm very strong about the difference. So, the top graph is showing that of the people who were substantiated for a, for an allegation, the predominant category of those are family members. So, of people who are committing mistreatment of at-risk adults, most of them that have been substantiated are family members. But forty-two percent is, is an allegation against a DD system advocate is the most likely to be upheld. So, that doesn't mean there are a lot of reports against them. It just means of the ones that are reported, most of those turn out to be supported by the evidence. So, that could be like five reports and like three of them were substantiated. It doesn't mean that that's the outsider, that's the driving relationship that we're trying to screen out.
Yeah, Thomas was.
Well, I appreciate that, Ted, because, and as a provider, the reason for that is usually providing care and there's systems and people around you monitoring your care. So, there's two other staff in the group home or there's a system built around protecting people.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that the DD system is bad. It means that the DD system is remarkably effective at reporting only pretty good cases to APS.
We can move off data for a while, even though this has been really fun. Another very important part of an APS is the assessment. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that today because it's not the most relevant thing to the rule packets we'll be considering. But please know that this piece is very important. This is where we figure out what's going on with this individual and what do they need and how can we help. This is the social work piece. This is, our caseworkers are excellent in not only assessing what the services in place, just these people. So, we actually have an assessment tool in APS that was validated and validated by the federal company due last year. And it's basically a tool that the caseworker will use to identify what are the risk factors? Are there any mitigating factors that are helping to alleviate that? Sort of where does this person stand when they first went through the case? And again, happy to talk further about that, but for today, I'm just going to pause under this a little bit. And then, there are certain factors within each assessment area. So, an example of a risk factor that would be mitigated is a person with some ambulatory complaints that they're unsteady on their pay. They would be safer with a care and a walker. So, if they already had a care and a walker, we would just note that, that yes, they have an unsteady pay, but they have a care and a walker. And what the assessment does, even though it's kind of court party and things like that, is it gives us a general sense of what does this person need. And that directly ties into case planning. And so, these are, again, some of our key principles showing up in the case planning process, that we're doing the least restrictive intervention, that this is based on considerable determination. And then, we also wanted to point out that some of you are familiar with child welfare again and other programs, that they actually have money and services for their caregivers. APS does not. We heavily rely on the services available in my community through other programs and support. So, a lot of times what APS is doing is coordinating and hooking up with the parents and the mothers first. And so, we provided a nice little graphic for you of what some of those things look like. So, towards the end here, we're going to talk a little bit about involuntary case planning and hardship because we know there's been some tensions about that. So, we wanted to give you sort of wrap up this morning with a little bit on how this process works. So, it's important to know that typically consent is required. But there are about three percent of all services that we accommodate for APS clients that are done without the client's consent or involuntary. And so, if a person lacks capacity, if they're temporarily unable to make decisions, if they have a guardian, if they have a guardian, then the guardian will make the decision or if they're divided, it's law. So, then a variety of services that we could be putting in place in these circumstances, like hospitalization, treatment, or capacity evaluations. And obviously, the most restrictive involuntary service is when APS at the county level petitions for guardianship or conservatorship. So, we wanted to talk a little bit about guardianship and what that looks like for APS. APS cannot just go out and seek guardianship of an individual. Again, we have. Again, you have to meet that definition of at-risk adult and it has to be mistreatment for APS involved. Once APS is involved, statute urges, but does not require the county APS program to seek or petition for guardianship when adult lacks capacity and there's nobody else to take the guardianship. Um, so we have some counties that will petition for guardianship, there are other counties who will not. We just have a practice that they don't do that. Um, and statutorily, they're not required to. Um, when, when the county petitions for guardianship, however, there are statutes and requirements that they have to adhere to as far as, um, you know, providing evidence. And the court ultimately decides, um, when the county gets guardianship.
I, I think I'm fascinated and not totally comfortable so with the notion that some counties, based on their discretion, would seek involuntary guardianship status, while others would not. I'm curious, it occurs to me, it occurs to me that anything is going to be standardized. Outstanding sort of our culture here for local control and understanding counties' dynamics and counties' behavior. Should I be worried about that? It feels like I should be worried about that. Should I be worried about that?
Um.
I agree with that too.
Okay, let me tell you what I know about it, um, and we can get you data and stuff like that, um, on this. In some counties, they don't petition for guardianship because they have other resources available. For example, in Colorado Springs, there's a nonprofit agency that does guardianships and no APS when they get a case that they feel like that somebody, you know, there's no family member or anyone else to sue guardianship, they can, they can refer to that agency. So I would be, personally, I would be less concerned because it's not like they're just dropping it, right? They're, they're handing it off to somebody who's qualified and, um, able to do that. Um, in smaller counties, some of the reason why they tend to, they don't do it is, um, they just don't get a lot of cases. So, um, maybe they would if it was a really extreme situation, but you don't have, you know, they haven't, um, because they just haven't gotten a case that would need that. Um, and then there is the discretionary piece, um, so I'm not sure, you know, I know, for example, Denver County does take guardianships, um, there's also a resource component. Yours, you know, not only is the guardianship intensive, you know, keeping that APS case, I think. So it takes that, so it's looking at where to support that.
Would you be able to provide us with a list of, you guys, would you be able to provide us with a list of those communities where there are other organizations, nonprofits or whatever, that provide the service? It would be, it would be interesting to know where there's no resource.
Sure.
A situation where it seems that guardianship is needed.
Sure, and I think while we have some anecdotal data, we don't have that available right now, like at that disposal. But what we can potentially do is like survey, you know, the counties to get better information collected. Because we wouldn't know necessarily, but you know, how other resources are not. Um, so we can ask sort of a series of questions, like if we get at what you're looking for, something like that.
I think a component of that also might be that if a county had a piece of policy decision, if they're not trying to do that, or is that even measurable because the county don't, some communities have less, have a lot of, uh, I guess what I would say, family support for an individual who might be in that position. And so a formal guardianship may never be entered into, even though if they didn't have that structure or family structure, it, it might be. And I, I think that would be a hard thing to kind of separate, we just don't, haven't had any guardianships versus we won't do that. I don't know, that, that would be hard to separate out, I think.
Yeah, I think my concern is really around not why counties don't, but why counties do. It occurs to me that that's the nuclear option, that you're stripping away decision with capacity or something. There better be a really good reason, and we've established rigorous, people criteria that we want to meet before doing that. I'd like to make sure that it's the same in El Paso County as it is, in Alamosa as it is, in Laramo as it is, in Sonic, et cetera.
I, I would just say from, from my experience as a county commissioner, we don't go around looking for guardianships because we don't make, they cost us a lot of money and resources. And so if we can find someone else who's gonna serve that purpose, uh, we will utilize them.
Yeah, we would exhaust that process before, you know, any county could do it. But at the end of the day, if somebody's just left, to collect, because no one will step up, that's a problem too.
I, I might just make the, underscore the point that two counties must go for a judge to get that guardianship. So there is scrutiny David, to, to answer your concern. A third party is looking at that saying, isn't there anyone else? That's been my experience as I talk to counties, is that they, very much like what you're saying, Thomas, Julie, is we don't have, we don't wanna step into that, we wanna seek other people, natural supports that can fulfill that role. And so I, I think there's a number of protections, but we can still provide the information relative to what counties are, have a guardianship program in what counties.
Now, that's what I want to clarify. So at, at any given time, there's around twenty counties that have guardianship in place. I don't know of any counties that have such a firm policy against guardianship, that they would not take guardianship if that became the only thing necessary.
That's true.
For example, there's a very tiny county, um, gets a handful of reports a year. Um, hadn't had a guardianship in the first fifteen years I worked in this program. And ended up with a case where they had to call us because that was really the last resort. Um, and so while counties may not do it on a regular basis, what I've found is that if they get to a point where they haven't been able to identify a family member or another appropriate person, and there truly is no other option, they, they're not going to let that person hang out there without some protections.
Okay.
And then to address David's, um, concerns, we have some examples coming up that I think will give you some idea of why, what we do, step in.
Just here's some data, I kind of, which I forgot how big your business. Um, and so in the last two fiscal years, we provided services, so that case planning services to over fourteen thousand at-risk adults. Just under a hundred fifty of those, or about one percent, resulted in the county, uh, petitioning for guardianship and receiving it. And only about fifteen of those over that two-year period, um, were adults with IDG. And then additional data is that last fiscal year, uh, courts awarded guardianship in fifty-four cases to the county. And twelve of those started as emergency guardianship and then became guardian. And we did go back and look at a statistically valid example of guardianship cases from last year. And, um, in our assessment, they were all appropriate for guardianship, so there weren't counties going out and just doing this just because. Um, and, um, we have some examples of what guardianship, both emergency and, um, from the guardianship of, of like. So I'm just gonna sort of review one of these examples. I'm gonna pick the one on the bottom, um, less words. So an eighty-year-old, uh, individual who had been to implement a P O A, for those who don't know, with power of attorney. Uh, they were refusing to pay for an in-home care, but instead they began using a non-feeing to pay themselves eight thousand dollars' funds. Um, the emergency conservator, um, appointed, was appointed to get control of those funds. And the power of attorney stopped providing, um, care without notice. So an, an emergency guardianship was appointed by the court to APS, um, to facilitate a case management precision making for that individual. It's a fairly extreme example of, um, what, somebody who says to guardianship, this is an older adult with, um, advanced dementia, um, needing some support here. But again, those are very, very rare. And then a typical guardianship example, we have some examples here, um, I don't know, let's pick the shortest one again, on the bottom. Um, a fifty-year-old with a traumatic, uh, severe injury, uh, was unable to complete activities of daily living or provide for their own safety. A family refused to act as a guardian, um, so the county ended up petitioning for guardianship and the court later did to, for that individual. And then we have, I know you probably can't see this very well and it's not very clear in your packets. We have a little handout for you that we can pass around with a figure. Clear version of this, but we wanted to provide you with the life of the case. Um, so this is kind of what we talked about today. Um, and it's there for your reference and study. And I would just say that you guys have been tremendously, um, curious and engaging and I appreciate all the discussion. If you do have questions or want more information, we do have an annual report online. And you can always email us, um, if you're curious about. That's where we're, where we're at. What, what other questions do you have? Yes.
Um, so of the screened out, what's the likelihood that we eventually get back in? You know, because they're, they're pretty high risk, they just maybe got a lot of screened out.
Do you all have, have that P O A?
Cause I think about that through the whole child welfare, certainly, in terms of, well, lots of the.
We did have a sharp follow-up case that's worked on, it's a great question, but we don't. Remember the slide with the six APS staff that do all the training? If you can help us increase that number, we can get you better insurance.
So is my obsession about that pie graph?
Yes.
Of eighteen percent come from care facilities and would it be feasible for you to check in with your, uh, child welfare people and see how does that eighteen percent compare to a parallel number in a child protection system? Um, you know, sense of foster home allegations substantiated and congregating.
I would, I would question you as, as, um, when you start designing to data comparisons, which, the definition of what we're including is a facilities category for our purposes, obviously, that's for parents and infant children. So what we could potentially do is provide you like what types of facility that makes up? And then let you see whether you can, I have what types of facilities that makes up. I don't think it would be, you know, apples to apples, because I don't know on the children's side of things, what facilities would be the equivalent of the adult's facilities.
Sure, or it seems like you can parse off approximations.
There's also a distinction between the two types of cases. Children, uh, it's, children can't say, get out of my life, I don't want you to protect me.
Well, they say that all the time.
But which, you know, is in the system, I, I think would be more interventionist in, in that regard. Our, our cases, we're dealing with adults that can say, you know. Uh, but it, it's an interesting question to remember the facilities. Uh, we, we would have to look at what facilities are included in, in our group and then what facilities are involved in it. Because foster care is licensed, right? Um, and by the, by the state. And so there would be a lot of differences between the two groups.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the page five, client ordering arrangement slide.
We'll, yeah, we'll, we'll, all the caveats and.
No, yeah, exactly, maybe you find out there's no way to parse it out, but.
Well, your earlier questions, your earlier question was, you know, what is their target? Right, what is, what is acceptable, how far away are they from, what they consider, like?
Yeah, whatever, I, I mean, I understand there is this, I just, all these still seem like, if you're not, it's a good number. Thanks.
Uh, just one quick question, was I chosen, what did we not discuss? Adult protective services due process.
Um, so a point of clarification, we can talk about that now, but that is, um, part of rule packet two that you'll hear, um, during the rulemaking session in a little bit. Um, and so we developed that and provided that to you because, um, I think there has been a concern expressed that the rules themselves are pretty complicated and there's a lot of timelines. Um, so this is, this is pending your approval, um, of what it would look like if you approved the rules as this.
I did have a question, I saw that we had information submitted by the ombudsman and I take the ombudsman's role, like, I think that's a helpful role.
Sure.
I don't see that necessarily here, or I just haven't studied it closely enough.
No, that's a great question, sure.
Let me, let me interrupt you, I wanna make sure that the extent to which the rule packet that we're here this morning, about which this written testimony has been submitted is considered in our movement session.
Okay.
And so that as we contemplate testimony and feedback, we are taking it into context with.
The, the record, yeah, okay, so let's, let that.
I, I can address just, uh, real quickly, when we talked about joint investigations and, um, collaboration among investigators who um, we mentioned CCB, law enforcement, C P D, um, sometimes APS will, will appear or, you know, coordinate with or about long-term engagement in the community, um, on, on those cases. And that for confidentiality statutes is an acceptable way for, um, APS to share information about APS if they both have a case.
Um, I don't wanna go through the whole case investigation process and that, but I do think it can be a little confusing the difference between providing services within the case and the investigation of an, of a report. What's, could you explain the relationship between both of that?
Sure, um, and this is something I didn't mention during your presentation, but in, um, once a case is open, so once a report is screened in, every case is open. The investigation and the assessment and the case planning for the individual happen pretty simultaneously. So the caseworker is supposed for doing all those interviews, gathering evidence for the investigation. Um, but similarly, at the same time, you know, conducting that assessment tool, um, determining what the needs of the individual are by you to start to get the services in place. So they're kind of simultaneous processes, um, depending on the case and the situation, one can be a little further ahead than the other. Um, but ultimately, those are, you know, pretty tangible.
So can a case continue to be open after the investigation has been closed and the finding substantiated or unsubstantiated?
Correct, um, so the majority of cases will be closed, um, once the investigation is complete and the, um, assessment and case planning has been done and services have been put in place. Um, a case can continue to be open, um, for example, guardianship case, an APS case would stay open if the APS with the guardian and they would continue to be required to be monitored to that individual.
Mark, maybe, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. This conversation, some of this is extraordinarily useful. It is, ten o'clock straight up, will recess five minutes, please, ladies and gentlemen. For everybody who's joined us today, know that we are trying something for the first time ever. Um, we're trying electronic access, not just to listen into our meetings, but also to buy testimony and so.
So I have some audio, it's not working, I have some additional, so I can start, but it is pretty noisy.
Okay. So hopefully, we're gonna try this and it's gonna be superb and effective. And if it isn't, I apologize profusely in advance and I promise there is nothing that, um, folks um, would bring us that won't be entered into the record. Somehow, some way, we will make sure that it gets them all in. But, but do be patient with us as we try and sort through this, uh, electronic public testimony stuff. I would also add.
Thank you, we're gonna hear you, loud and clear, thank you.
That is excellent. Um, I also wanna ask that for members of the board, anybody else. And anybody else, please do wait to be recognized so that folks who are in fact listening in, uh, know who's talking. For those of you who are listening in. For those of you who are listening in and are providing for us testimony, we will recognize you, I'll call you by name. It's super hard when it's electronic. I'm struck by our inability, for example, to read intent in text messages because it's really hard. And for those of you joining us online, will have that same obstacle. Know that if I interrupt you, it is not because I'm trying to be rude, but rather trying to, to keep us relatively focused and on schedule. I don't know that I've got any other disclaimers or caveats to offer vis a vis our electronic testimony and protocols this morning. So with all of that established, I made my hands on my agenda. Every month, the State Board of Human Services reserves the first fifteen minutes of each board meeting to hear from members of the public on any issue that isn't on the agenda for the day. Um, and so I would welcome, looks like we've got, that's document two. One. Looks like we have one, two, three members with us today signed up to provide testimony in that open comment period. And Ms. Froning, good morning. Are you wanting, are you wanting to testify during the open comment period as well as in reference specifically to rule document number two?
That's up to you. It's very brief. I could go ahead now or I will wait for your next call on me later. Your choice.
Thank you, Ms. Froning. I will, I will indeed call on you. So let us start then with Maureen Welch. Good morning. Join us, please. And just a reminder for the sake of, if this is on stuff that isn't on the agenda, for those of you who are signed up and wish to sign up to testify on document number two or document number one, you can do that. We have the sign up sheets and you can testify as regards that specific set of documents. Good morning, Ms. Welch. Introduction. So please tell us what you want to say.
Sure. So are the microphones up there or is it down there? Because of the holes of the ceiling. Okay, I'm used to having them there. So my name is Maureen Welch. Thank you. It's good to see you all again and there's a few new faces that I haven't been able to meet before, so I appreciate that. Uh, I'm not going to comment on the rule packets. I'll do that later. But I wanted to comment a little bit in general about, um, two issues. One is just the level of anxiety concern around the lack of clarity in a lot of these things. And even today, as you were speaking, my anxiety level was going up because if you all, being so intelligent, understanding of human services are still confused, imagine how people in the community feel. It's very unclear. The fact that people can't see the actual investigation for that court order makes it even more secret. And that's why we're calling it the KGB. We're calling APS perpetrators because we have no idea what they're doing. We have no idea where they're operating because the process isn't clear. So that flow chart that Mindy made, um, I think is helpful in some ways and that's something that I asked her to do. Uh, because I think presenting it visually for a lot of people is more easy. Um, but I really think that the state board needs to look at the civil rights violations that are going on. You know, Martin Luther King's assassination was just recent, same month I was born. I just turned fifty. And I'm concerned about the lack of civil rights for this community. We're stripping people of civil rights. And one of my big questions is who determines capacity? We keep talking about capacity. The APS workers go to a five-day training. Are they legitimate to review medical records? Are they able to speak to a person to determine if they're processing? Uh, my son doesn't speak. How do they determine him? Even psychologists in schools don't know how to assess him. He's inaccessible. That's on his report to the federal government. So how do we determine capacity? How do we determine APS has the right to intervene? This is really concerning to me. And then the other thing that's raised my anxiety is that my son is turning eleven next month. Okay, rule packet three, which is an ombudsman, so I can speak to it, right, Mr. Chair?
I believe that's in, is that?
Okay. Um, rule packet three.
Although let me, let me acknowledge this. I haven't seen rule packet.
I know, I know. Well, this is, it contributes to the overall anxiety.
Thank you.
Um, I've had some nightmares lately because we went to the stakeholder meeting that Mindy was kind enough to organize and her staff. And I learned that people can be charged with, or substantiated, I shouldn't say charged, substantiated as young as eleven years old. So we're talking about giving minors a label for substantiation. That to me is extremely concerning from a civil rights perspective. And being a former recovering teacher myself and a parent of three boys who are quite rough because they're little boys, I just don't think that's an appropriate thing for APS to be getting involved with. There's too much gray area there. And I'll close so that other people can comment. I listened to the Martin Luther King, I Have a Dream speech several times over the last week. And we've come so far and I feel like this is really turning the clock back on the adverse community. Even when we talk about self-determination and we talk about least restrictive environment, I don't see those happening because everything's behind a curtain of secrecy in APS. So my question here is, is this really something that the board can move forward with without really questioning the legalities of civil rights? There's several civil rights attorneys in town who have said it's lawless. There's not enough due process. There's not enough notification of individuals. No one is notified when a case is open. When an investigation starts, no one knows. That leads to that anxiety. So I've had nightmares of my son being dragged, dragged out of my house since we had that stakeholders meeting. Because he's eleven and according to rule packet three, he can be charged as a substantiated perpetrator. We don't have perpetrator defined though. We don't have it defined. I'm very concerned. So I'm coming here, I've had many conversations with parents who are too afraid to make couple of comments. But I just want to tell you that unlike what Director Beek has said in front of the JAC, which I personally found quite offensive, there's just a couple of advocates causing all these problems and putting the pause on this whole issue. It's more than a couple of advocates. I have thousands of people on my newsletters. I hear from hundreds of them. But the fear is so great in our community, so great. So please, I really respect all of you. I appreciate the efforts that the department has made in doing the stakeholder meetings. I really appreciate the fact of the public comment being open. I see a lot of efforts being made to become more transparent. But those are actually not extras. Those are things that every democratic state and department should be doing is having access for individuals, having ability to go to a meeting and get minutes. They created an actual website where we can actually see the minutes and agendas online. It's shocking. It used to be you have to be in the department and go through a portal. That's open records law. Okay, having that transparency is really important and that brings down that anxiety. So let's keep working on bringing down the anxiety. Let's press the pause button on all this APS stuff until we really understand it and we make sure civil rights are protected. And I know we have an assistant AG here, but I'm very concerned that civil rights attorneys are looking at these and saying, no, this isn't applying to court of law. And I know this is an administrative department, but it can be taken to a court of law to be questioned. So thank you very much and I'll pass the baton.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. And before we do that, any questions for the board? It's not right now. Thank you, Mary. Good morning, sir.
Ms. Chairman.
Introduce yourself for the record and let us know what you want us to hear.
I'm Paul Hernandez and what I've done to present to you is a, let's say, it's a postmaster's predoctoral paper that I've written. It's draft. It's in draft form and I sort of assembled it last night as I was thinking about this. But what has caught my attention for quite some time is this slide from APS's own training.
Let me interrupt. You do have a copy of this paper at your, at your place. Sorry.
That's on the poll.
And under their own training, it says, a history of repeated emergency room or hospital admissions is an indicator of physical abuse. The question that raises to me is that we know that individuals with ADD, most, forty percent of them are diagnosed with four chronic conditions or more. And let me read to you the chairman's own words. People with ADD are far more likely than their intellectual developing peers to experience health disparities, has proportionally higher rates of chronic disease and have access to preventative primary care and health promotion resources. And because there are excessive wait times in this country, four weeks or more, for this population, they can't wait four weeks to see the PCP. And so the only other option that they have is that they don't have option to, if urgent care isn't available. But many times, our nursing care facility can't handle the types of treatment that they need that an emergency room can. And so you're going to see more ADD individuals with chronic conditions in emergency rooms. And particularly, Maureen and I have heard of several cases where physicians have said, if this happens, here's the standing order. Here's our standing protocol. You take Little Susie or Little Phil to the emergency room because my office is not open on the weekends. And so you have a standing order. And so if they're Kaiser, which has excellent electronic health records, that will all be there. And so the attending physician can say, oh, this is why you brought Little Susie and Sally in because of their chronic condition that can be treated. My clinic's not open. Or what you will see is that you might have a surgeon who will say, oh, wait a minute, we can do this procedure in the emergency room as opposed to keeping the individual hospitalized for three months, for three days, waiting for a slot in the operating room. So we can, so they're trying to lean it down and for whatever reason that might be, it's a surgery procedure. But it saves money and it saves time. However, but according to this, that would be a history of repeated emergency room or hospital admissions. So what I'm trying to explain to you is that people with intellectual developmental disabilities are going to have these chronic conditions. They are born with them, they are diagnosed with them, and you will continue to see them in emergency rooms, especially with physicians ordering them. So keep that in mind as you're looking at rules, but, but there are lots of findings that say, as you look at this, and I won't read this word for word, but I wanted to have it available for you for reference so that you can see. And two of the, two of the references that I printed out were done by, by the chairman along with another colleague. But that's why it was important to, for you to understand, to bring that forward. So you know that people that, that work with, with this population, certainly the chairman understands it because this is what he does. Certainly, Maureen understands it because this is what she, she lives. I mean, families and people who do this, they live this every day with people with intellectual developmental disabilities. So what I'm asking the board to really consider is that, take a look at this very closely. You know, and weigh that against the rules and the potential rules that you might see coming forward. Because you have to understand that, that records are there and doctors are mandatory reporters. If they see something amiss, it's their duty to report. They're not going to just sit there and say, oh, we didn't see something. But when you see chronic conditions come back into the emergency room time and time and time again, that are part of a doctor's standard orders. And we've seen cases where APS has completely ignored a doctor's orders and said, well, we're, we're going to substantiate everybody because of this. The problem is, is that I've heard, I talked to a physician today who's a PCP for an ADD individual and said, you know, Rob, I can't disclose anything, but I had APS come forward to me and ask me to, to, to change my notes. I said, well, I can't do that. I'm a medical doctor. I'm not an investigator. I've reported to you what I've seen and what, what I've ordered and what I've advised. And so you need to understand that there's a whole set of unintended consequences that might happen as a result of someone sitting there and I forget who asked the question about, is this maybe, Mr. Davidson, you asked, is this consistent county by county by county? We're not seeing that. I mean, what Maureen is hearing, what I'm hearing, is that one county might do more guardianships or they might do more substantiations than another. In other words, even though this is a state operated, state has oversight, you have sixty-four different counties with sixty-four different ways and interpretations of doing things. But my point being is I did all this research just so that you would know that ADD individuals are going to have repeat emergency room visits.
And the last thing we want to do is have parents not take their individual or anyone, take anyone to an emergency room because they're afraid of being flagged for APS when in fact they need care. See what I mean? I don't want that to be a barrier to care, the fear.
And in addition to that, you know, because when you jump to a preponderance of evidence, which is the next thing, just because someone has gone to an emergency room is not a preponderance of evidence. That's medical care. And have the family or families not do that, then they would be guilty of mistreatment for not taking the emergency. You sort of see the endgame there. And so that's what I wanted to point out. That's why I spent some time doing this research. So you would understand that this part about emergency rooms or repeated hospital admissions probably needs to have a cycle over taken out. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's why I spent some time doing this. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions? Ms. Welch?
You know, it would be my, I, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying for sure. But isn't this something taken in whole? I mean, obviously someone's bleeding. That's not going to be, the department's not like, I mean, this is a whole host of things that if multiple things were happening. So I understand your point about certainly someone should be taken to the hospital anytime emergency care or care is needed and their physician is not available. That should not be in itself a reason for substantiation. But taken all together, you can start to see patterns. Do you understand?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Except, the reason I bring this forward is because the focus was emergency visits and repeat hospital admissions. And we know of a couple of cases where APS jumped in and has guardianship. And we've seen repeat emergency room visits. We've seen, we've seen the care get worse is what we've seen. So that's why, so they started off by saying, a family member, you took Little Susie to the emergency room. So therefore you are, we have determined that you are a perpetrator and guilty of neglect. So that's why I focused on this. So yes, all of the other things, but, but this, but this is a critical piece. So when they focus on this and jump in for, to do the things that they do, that's the part that I'm separating out because, yes, I would agree, but that's not what's happening with emergency visits or hospital admissions. That's why I did all the data and all the research to show that, that that's not what's happening.
Any further questions for Mr. Chairman? Seeing none. Is there a Mr. Knoxville? Come on forward. Is there another chair we can sort of scoot up? Thank you, Ms. Welch. You're very kind.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Don Knox with the Home Care Association of Colorado. And first I want to say what a great presentation that was on APS, really terrific and I appreciate all you do. We didn't talk about how you're going to pay for the due process. It's going to be on mandatory background checks. And we have two issues, cost and speed. Speed is up to ten days turnaround time. That's too long. It should be instant in most cases. And I prepared a report on how you can do it.
There's also extra, extra place.
Yes. And then, and that's substantial because we imagine there are going to be about a hundred twenty to a hundred fifty thousand checks a year. So if you do the math on the ten days, one point two to one point five million business days, lots of paydays, care days, you know, it is huge potentially. And it needn't be, you know, I was a project manager for the Cal judicial branch contractor on the co-court system, which we were the first state to have online judicial records managed. Two thousand and one, instant search, instant return. They tell us this is private data and it's not public data. So it's not, you can't, it's not a comparable situation. But in ninety-nine percent of the cases, it'll be a no hit. There won't be a Chris Wadney. There won't be a Bernard Busher. There won't be a Constance Rule in the database. Oh, it would be astronomically small that that would happen. And, and it wouldn't be one a year. So there's no reason that a search can't return immediately. And I'm told that it's a first name, last name, data, data first search, no association. That is exactly how the co-court system operates. And if you did get a return, a return that wasn't a no hit, then you can do the human, human investigation of the record. So at that stage, the screen would display, hey, it's taking a little bit longer. We're not going to give you an immediate return. So for the ninety-nine percent of cases that are no hit, media return, person's hired, they're working that day. Really, really critical. Second thing, cost. A CBI background check is six dollars and eighty-five cents a name search. A co-courts check, if you buy in volume, if you're a big hospital system or a home health agency, you can buy it for as little as two fifty a check. You're proposing a cap of thirty-five dollars, the fiscal note had sixteen fifty. This is going to come out of the agencies and out of the consumers, out of Medicare. This, all these costs are going to get passed to other people. So I do want you to be mindful of the cost and the speed.
Thank you, Mr. Knox. Question? Questions for Mr. Knox?
Mr. Knox, was this a discussion item?
Mr. Davidson. Thank you. We do have people listening online. Mr. Davidson.
Was this a discussion item during the passage of 171284?
Mr. Knox.
It has been discussed. You know, more details came out about the system. Obviously, the $35 cap couldn't have been discussed because the fiscal note had anticipated $16.50. I don't think we provided enough information about the speed of the search. Frankly, it didn't occur to us in 2018 that we were going to use human-powered searches here. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Knox? Thank you, sir. For being with us.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Tatten.
Thank you. My name is Jim Tatten. I'm representing myself. In November 2008, I suffered a severe traumatic brain injury. I testify in the period today as a cognitively disabled adult. Under Colorado statute, I am an at-risk adult. My purpose today is to call public attention to these invisible cognitive injuries, specifically traumatic brain injuries. I can't smell, I can't taste, I can't read, I can't comprehend. I'm not in a wheelchair, my arm's not missing, and I don't wear a pirate's patch. Invisible injuries are very difficult to live with, whether as an individual, as a family member, or as an individual trying to reassemble back into the community. My ask to the board is to proceed cautiously. If adopted, these rules will have the full force and effect of law. And I think my consistent message over the past couple of weeks has been that the rules and regulations touch individuals, families, communities, businesses, and industries. I hope my message and my concern carries some weight with you, because first, I am an at-risk adult, whether, and I'm cognitively disabled. Secondly, soon after my injury, I resigned from the Board of, Arc of Denver. I was a board member of Advocacy Denver for about 17 years. I was the treasurer for a long, long time. And I think more importantly, for almost three decades, I've helped shape state legislation and regulation over 25 states. If I have a concern with proposed regulations, I think the board at all, I'd share my concern. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Tatten? Ms. Wu.
Yes, thank you for coming and testifying today. I'm curious what aspect of the rule package or the rules you're concerned about.
Mr. Tatten.
My concern is probably with regard to the due process structure under the overall umbrella of legal standards, whether those be standards concerning allegations and burdens of hurt. My real concern results from the discussions I heard on the floor of the State Senate earlier this week concerning allegations. I don't want the board to use these rules to fall into the same legal experiment, you know, PR hole that the legislature has fallen into. And that's, I, that's not a statement with regard to, you know, the weight and evidence. I think it's the process that's failed. I saw a public stoning on the floor of the State Senate. I heard stories of an individual and his family and his children being harmed as a result of these allegations. I listened to a state senator speak before the public and say, I've investigated over 1,000 crimes, murders, sexual assaults, sexual assault of children. The report that the Senate has before us, if my deputy had written this, he wouldn't be a deputy. That's what I'm concerned with. Everyone, we have a shared goal. Everyone wants to protect individuals, families, and communities. What I don't want, what I don't want is for a system to be in place that falls apart as the process is moving forward, like we saw, not only in the Colorado House of Representatives, but also the Colorado State Senate. Thank you.
Mr. Busher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Folks, here's where I've been struggling, okay? The specific question I would ask you is where and in which ways are these rules inconsistent with the state statute? Our job is to put meat around a state statute. And I hear the concerns about due process, but I need to be specifically told that this language is inconsistent with or exceeds what the state statute contains. Our role is limited. We don't get to second guess the legislature. We only get to write the details around statutes they've already passed. And that is the, that's where I'm making an excess.
Mr. Tatten? Or Mr. Hernan, since you're still here.
Well, I think as you're going to hear some testimony from people who were involved with the state board meetings, you will see Representative Busher, you will see a couple of instances where the department is actually going outside with the published rules that have nothing to do with House Bill 171284. So, we'll cite those specific examples. So, that's a very good question. So, I agree that if you're sticking to the statute, the charge of this board is to try to follow it as best as they can. But you also know the process as well. The board can approve this, they can approve by the Secretary of State, then there's a whole other process that it goes through, continues on through the legislature as they look to see where those rules put together correctly. So, good question. So, I know that Mr. Tatten is also practicing attorney, correct me if I'm wrong. Not anymore. But he's still an attorney, he has a JD. And so, and having worked with him for 20 some odd years, well, the entire time I was in the legislature, I found him to be very credible, very reasonable, very rational in his approach to things. But that's a very good question. But I know what the other thing that he's referring to is he's referring to Senator Cook. And Senator Cook, who was looking at, I don't know, somehow he got a copy of the investigative report, but his, one of his concerns was, well, wait a minute, the senator that was mentioned had an attorney, so therefore, he's not credible.
Mr. Combs?
So, after discussing with OVAH, with my colleagues, with Dr. Martin, the way OVAH treats the statute is that an interviewing professional can, that section on an interviewing professional releasing someone from custody refers to the 72-hour hold. And the transport is a process that concludes once there's a warm transfer to the facility. There's no sort of release from the transport. There doesn't need to be someone signing off saying, okay, this transport is over. As long as there's a handoff, the transport concludes by its own terms. And I discussed with Dr. Martin, and I think we both feel that this could be, we can go into more detail in the trainings to providers, that would be useful, but it doesn't need to be discussed further in consideration for the whole.
Additional or further questions or comments for the department? Anything further from the department? Remove the adoption of Document Number One incorporating the stated basis and purpose and specific statutory code contained in the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Busher. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say zon. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Remove Document Number Two. Adult Protective Services Program revisions to be brought to the table before discussion. Good morning again, Mr. Wester.
Hi.
Good morning, yes. I would point out, among your finders, members of the board, there are two letters, one from the Office of the State of Longform Care and Ambulance, the second from the Alzheimer's They are submitted in support of Document Number Two, which is a reference, so you know that they are there. Mr. Wester, you've brought guests. If you would introduce yourself first for the record, and then your guests, and walk us through Document Number Two.
By all means, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Wester. I'm the Director of the Office of Emergency Access and Independence. And my last mention, Mindy Kemp, who was the Division Director for Adult and Aging Services, including APS, and then Cara Kroll, who is part of our ARD units. And they will be assisting me as we look at the rule package.
Mr. Wester.
Okay. Good morning, state board members. We are bringing back Rule Packet 17-26-06-02 for final adoption. This is Document Number Two, the packet today. You might recall that we did a first reading back in February up in Laramore County. I appreciated the robust discussion we had at that time. Since that time, I just want to give you a high-level description of our response as an office and as a department in response to that meeting. First of all, we took feedback about specific changes that you recommended in this rule packet, and we will highlight those later on. So, we appreciate that. Secondly, we've slowed the rulemaking process. We delayed the second reading until this date, and were not before you last month. And then, we will be, so we delayed the rule packet process. One of the reasons for that is the state board asked us to do, to be sure that we had completely and comprehensively engaged stakeholders in the process, and we've done that. We scheduled three stakeholder meetings that were open to providers, family members in one concern, and we tried to distribute those invitations widely. We did, on March 8th, we met with stakeholders for approximately two hours. And in that, during that time, we presented the APS 101 that we presented to the board this morning, and had a good conversation, really focusing on the overview of the APS program. On March 13th, we met again with stakeholders on Rule Packet Two. You might recall that we had a stakeholder engagement meeting back in January, I believe January 25th, where we reviewed Rule Packet Two at that time with stakeholders. So, we had a second meeting on March 13th, really to get their specific feedback and ask them for specific feedback about how to improve Rule Packet Number Two. And then, March 28th, and I won't go much into this, but I think it's important that we reviewed Rule Packet Three, which you will see for the first time in May, at that stakeholder engagement, and we got feedback from stakeholders at that time as well. So, I really appreciate the feedback that we've gotten, both from the board, stakeholders, from providers. We do have also a timeline that we wanted to share with you kind of the context behind our implementation plan. Statute requires us to implement this and begin background checks on January 1st, 2019. And so, based on that statutory deadline, we've developed an implementation plan, and we wanted to give you an overview of that for reference. And I mentioned earlier that we had delayed and slowed down the rulemaking process. Even with those considerations and the schedule that you see here, we are still on track beneath the statutory deadline. But it does give you context about exactly what were all the moving parts, or not all the moving parts, but a high-level review of the moving parts of implementing this bill. The items that are shaded in green are the anticipated date of state board review. The orange items are dependent upon Rule Packet Number Two adoption. And then, the yellow items are dependent upon Rule Packet Three adoption. And one of the components that is involved in standing up this background check process is there are staff to hire and train and onboard before we can actually have the infrastructure to do the background check. Any questions?
I might regret asking, but I'm asking. Rule Packet Three, I find myself for the second time this morning trying to decide if I'm comfortable or uncomfortable with knowing that there's been some discussion about Three that is informing thinking, certainly from a stakeholder perspective, it sounds like, about Three. And to the extent that comments that, or testimony may affect, perhaps connect Two to Three, where I feel a sense of flying a little bit blind in our decision-making process. And so, it's curious that Three is out there as part of the debate, and I think that's generally speaking, good, more information, better. But we have a, we have to contextualize as best as conceivably possible to make as informed a decision as possible, and that information is not known to the board. So, can you sort of help me understand, even if it's just by way of process, you don't have to agree with me, why that's been part of the conversation so far? And let me just see if that's a good enough question to get an answer. Mr. Wester, you want to take a shot at that, or would you defer?
I'll defer to Mindy from Miss Kemp to respond to that.
Miss Kemp, introduce yourself for the record, please, again, and then respond to the question.
Sure. Good morning, still. My name is Mindy Kemp, and I'm the Director of the Division of Economic Services. And so, that's a great question. Let me sort of explain the process and where we're at in that, and then we'll try to hopefully address the surrounding problems. So, the reason why we decided to chunk this into three different rule packets, as you recall, we passed Rule Packet One several months ago. That was very simply related to APS training requirements that we needed to have a place early on. So, we couldn't wait until this point in time to get those passed, so we decided to sort of separate that and get that taken care of early on. We did need more time to develop the draft of due process rules, which is Rule Packet Two. So, that's why you're hearing them sort of at this point in time. And then, Rule Packet Three really pertains to how the tax checks will be done. And so, there's a clear distinction between Rule Packet Two and Rule Packet Three. Rule Packet Two that you have before you today, let me call them one to the right and spread them out to the people for ourselves. Two pertains exclusively to things related to the due process. Three pertains specifically to how the employers will apply the tax checks. The thing that's getting a little muddy is the fact that we have been doing so much stakeholder engagement for the past six months, that as we've been developing various versions of these rule packets and finalizing the version that you will all see as the final version. as the final version for your consideration, we've been meeting with stakeholders. And so, as we meet with stakeholders, as I take calls or have meetings personally with individuals, we're using that as an opportunity to work through any of the kinks in it. So there are actually several things in Rule Packet Three that we had, you know, the draft two months ago that our men met for, and you won't even see, because we've identified, you know, unintended consequences or things that don't really make sense from the perspective of employers, that we've already written out. So kind of the simple explanation is that there's not a lot of overlap between Rule Packet Two and Three, that this really is due process-related for today. And then next month, we'll talk more about how the actual CAPS checks will be done. But we also didn't want you all to see a version of Three that wasn't complete, and that had draft stops that you're not able to consider.
Thank you. I guess I would assert, in fairness, that that sounds like a fairly standard process. For example, we don't see a rule proposal before it goes to PAC typically. And I guess perhaps my question is just more grounded in the notion that this is a big darn deal, and it's complicated and complex. I appreciate that departments want to create distinctions between One, Two, and Three, on the one hand, and on the other hand. It strikes me that it's inevitably diffuse. One, in fact, if not totally iterative, has some relationship to Two, and One and Two combined have some relationship to Three. So that's, I suppose, where my question comes from. And I appreciate your answer, because that is standard practice in this substance making. And I don't want to create an exception to the rule necessarily. But it is useful to have that broader context as we deliberate in the merits of the issue. So thank you for that answer. Do you want to follow up yet?
Just a minute, just a minute, again. And so, one of the things, I know spreadsheets are tough and colors and all that kind of stuff, but I think one of the things that will help clarify that as well is that when you look at this table that we've put together, the items in orange are really related to Packet Two. And so, for the purposes of today, for example, if you were to approve Rule Packet Two, then we would be able to make, you know, the second row, all of the updates to the CAPS data system that we need to make. We'd be able to start hiring for the person who would do the appeals. And then, starting in July, once that rule packet was actually on the books and effective, the due process would start for people substantiated in APS cases. Versus the yellow, you'll see a lot of the start of that is starting in July, all the way through January. That pertains to us hiring and making the data system modifications for how those CAPS checks will begin. So you can see the distinction between... We really need to get moving on the due process piece, because that's specified to start July first. Whereas, we do have a little more time to discuss things like that and take some time to walk through the CAPS checks process, which I know some stakeholders have, you know, shared concerns with us, and we can talk about those over the next few months.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark Wester, Director of OCAI. Just answering for what Mindy said. Packet One really deals with county staff and how we prepare them. Packet Two is really installing, designed to install due process into the CAPS background check process, and that's protections for the alleged individuals that are alleged to abuse someone. And then Packet Three deals with primarily the operations of how employers are going to interface with the department to get the information. So that's another way of looking at the three rule packets. I want to thank the board for encouraging us to go back and do further stakeholder engagement. We thoughtfully considered the feedback of the stakeholders. It's been good conversations. It hasn't been easy at times, both for stakeholders and for members of my team, but it's been good. And we've made some revisions. And in some cases, we have not made any revisions, and we'll go into that. But I'm going to turn it over to Mindy to start walking through the specific Rule Packet Two. And we'll be happy to entertain your questions as we do. Please go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, we're going to sort of jump into the rules part, but before we do that, on analysis page thirteen of the rule packet, we have, I wanted to point out that we have the updates to the stakeholder feedbacks on the last version that you reviewed in February. So there's information in there about the feedback that you've seen, specific to Rule Packet Two. We did, during some of the meetings in March, you see we had on the general APS program, we had on Rule Packet Three. We will share that with you as appropriate during those times, but this is the feedback specific to this packet. And we went through the information about whether or not, you know, we made changes based on that feedback. There's some direction I don't know why. And so, ultimately, throughout the packet you may have seen some yellow highlights. And so, there are four key areas that we did change language or made additions in February meeting. So what I thought I'd do right now is walk you through those four changes that are highlighted in yellow, and let you know what's changed since the last version. And then, I wanted to note that there was one additional area where, I think, folks on the State Board had expressed questions or concern related to the definition of severity levels. And so, I was hoping that we could walk you the highlights first to let you know what's changed. We did not make changes to the severity levels at this time. And so, after we go through the highlights, maybe we can go back to severity levels and talk a little more about that. So we're going to start on opposed Rule Packet Two in the packet. And there you'll see that we've updated the definition of a case. One of the things that we've heard from stakeholders is that the definition was a little confusing. It was unclear sort of when a case starts and how long it should continue. And so, we've updated the definition of a case to provide clarification that a case involves more than just an investigation, it involves providing services, and that the county department can continue to provide services under a case through the investigation as concluded. And we had alluded to this in the APS 101, is that in very limited circumstances, a case may remain open almost indefinitely when a county, you know, petitioned the court and receives guardianship, that we wouldn't close the case, that that would remain an ongoing case, that the caseworker would be responsible for monthly in-person visits, those sorts of things. And so, we thought defining a case more clearly was helpful. Any questions on that? Okay, so moving on, we are going to propose Rule Package Four. And again, based on stakeholder feedback, we've added a definition of preponderance of evidence. It means the certifiable evidence that a claim is more likely than not true. This had not previously been in APS rules, but there was a question stakeholders to add this, so we had to work to figure out. Any questions on that one?
I may have asked this last. Is there a Colorado statute, sort of definition of preponderance, either in Civil Code or elsewhere?
No, generally, those are defined in safer rules.
Please go.
We're skipping ahead to proposed Rule Package Four. This is an edit that was made based on feedback at the February stakeboard meeting. As you recall, in Rule Packet One, we removed a reference to caseworkers requesting a social security member from the alleged perpetrator. And so, we made this correction to remove this from this rule packet as well, to align with that decision. Then we're going to skip ahead to page fifteen, the last of the yellow package, which starts. You'll see on number ten, and then on B three, we've made some updates to the language here, because during some of our stakeholder feedback sessions, we received feedback that the language number ten that we had proposed, the supervisor shall approve all findings. Some made it seem like that is a part of stamp process, that they, like, after approve all findings. And we didn't intend for it to sound like that. So we worked on the language a little bit to make it more clear that they, supervisor shall review the investigations and approve only when they have approved a bill of investigation and the evidence justifies the finding. Just to make it clear that it's not that they have to approve anything that comes to them, that they have to make their own decision.
Mr. Coen?
I just had an update from my previous case or a performance by my colleagues, that the definition also comes from the Colorado jury instructions, which are court-developed language that is used in civil cases. So when you're sitting on a jury, the judge will read you off a set of instructions. Here's what the following terms mean, the preponderance of the evidence means, blah, 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 blah. That's what the judges will use to instruct a jury when they're weighing evidence in a civil case under the preponderance of the evidence.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think that makes me feel a little bit better. My follow-up then would be, from whence does that come?
Mostly judges. Primarily, I believe, Colorado jury instructions are developed by civil judges. So are many judges.
And I hope you'll forgive this line of questions. Forgive an indulgence. Is it reasonable to assume, or do we have some reason to know, in fact, that the eight different judges issued eight different sets of instructions to eight different juries, is the definition the same from each of those eight instructions?
So, the Colorado jury instructions are developed by the Colorado Supreme Court. So that should answer the uniformity questions also.
Thank you very much indeed. And then, last question, as this is concerned. You mentioned in your first answer that it is defined in rule. You've amended that answer. I just want to make sure that if there are eight different packages of rules, are they also using this Colorado Supreme Court defined definition of preponderance?
Yes, my colleagues have been looking at other rules that are promulgated by this board, as well as the Colorado jury instructions, to make sure that they're aligned.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that gets us through the highlighted items, the items that have been changed with the original version. I did want to jump back to the severity levels, which are on opposed Rule Page Five, because we have heard some feedback from you all that you had questions in concerns about the addition of severity levels. So I wanted to take a few minutes to explain why we held off doing that for a passage, so we can open to what's left for questions. So originally, we... The way that we came up with these proposed rules is department staff met with our county partners through what we call the APS Task Group. It's a representative group of APS caseworkers, supervisors, administrators from a policy state. And we had not drafted severity levels into this. However, once we started sort of talking through what this due process would look like, and what the CAPS check would look like, it became clear to us that it would be helpful to cut that. And so, some of the considerations is why we proposed adding these. One is that employer stakeholders had requested this, that they went out to the Alliance and other groups of the providers, employers, that are going to hire to conduct these CAPS checks. They asked us what information would be providing us for if there was a hit or a match with the APS data system. And so, we explained that on the child welfare side, and what you'll see in Packet Three, is that we're proposing that we would provide to them the county in which the finding was made, the date of the finding, the type of mistreatment, that basic information. And what they said was, so all you're going to say it was physical abuse, or caretaker neglect. How will we have any context of, you know, the severity of that? And so, when we looked at the child welfare process, they do have severity levels in that program. And so, we talked with our county partners and kind of came up with these definitions of severity levels. Tailor focused on the child welfare system, so what makes sense for APS, and came up with these draft definitions. We also worked with our county partners to come up with some guidelines and some examples and parameters of what those would look like. So that's not necessarily something that we would include in rule, but we do have drafts of that that we're finalizing, we would then do training and technical assistance and provide documents to provide a framework, guidance. So for example, for a minor incident of physical abuse, these are the types of things you would look for and an example of that. For a moderate example of physical abuse, here's what that would look like. For severe, here's what that would look like. So that would be more on the training side and on our more guidance, more policy level process. So that was the key reason why we had included this. In addition to that, when we started thinking through the due process, we found that it would also be helpful as one of the factors that's considered in the settlement process, that it wouldn't be the only factor, but it would be potentially a factor that could help the folks doing the appeals and care shot, you know, in that settlement process. And so, for those two reasons, and then there was sort of an added, most bonus, if you will, of adding severity levels, is that APS caseworkers currently do have a conversation once somebody is substantiated, with, I mean, that pre- substantiated perpetrator. But starting July first, if these rules go through, we'll also be sending a notice. So every person substantiated in APS will receive a notice that says you've been identified as substantiated in the finding, provide all that information, here's how you can appeal. And so, we thought, well, it might be helpful for the person who's been substantiated, and also for the caseworker that is interacting with that person if there was more of a distinction between minor, moderate, and severe. So if you, you know, think of yourself as a person who's been substantiated in an APS case, and you get this letter that just says you've been, you know, identified as having a finding, that's one thing. If you had known you'd done something relatively minor, and that wasn't on there, you know, that could be difficult if it was something minor and there was a, you know, indicator that it was a minor, established as a minor, that might be a different story. And what we heard from caseworkers is that on the child, you know, those that did go child welfare in APS, they've said that on the child welfare side, that also makes it easier to collaborate with the person who's been substantiated, to, you know, get protective services in place and work with them collaboratively. But if it was something relatively minor, having that distinction really helps them put services in place and work with that person. So that's kind of the rationale and reasoning why we did choose to leave this in. But it would open up for any questions of us or discussion that you think you want to have on it.
Mr. Chair. I think it's interesting, and I just want you to speak a little bit to the fact that the minor, moderate, or severe is determined by the outcome to the individual, the victim, or what you would call that person, as opposed to the level of misconduct. So the mistreatment stays the same in all these. It's just what happens, right? So to me, it feels like the level would actually be more impacted by what is the level of neglect or abuse, no matter what happened to the person. Does that make any sense?
Ms. Kemp? Ms. Rogers, if you wouldn't mind coming to the table and introducing yourself. If you're part of the team answering questions.
Yes, good morning. This is Paye Rogers. I'm the Program Manager for the Adult Protective Services Program. So to answer that question, I think there are kind of levels of mistreatment. And Kara, can you give some examples as well? But for instance, if you had a care provider and you had a resident of a facility that kind of wandered away, they didn't get hurt, they were found right away, that could be minor. They wandered away, weren't located right away, and it was, they were out on the street for hours, that could be moderate. If something occurred to them and hurt them while they were out, that could be severe. Kara, you may have some other examples as well.
Example, yes. Excuse me.
This is Kara Kroll, Manager of the Administrative Review Division. The example that came to mind is very similar on the child welfare side, and that would be lack of supervision of a toddler, for example, who gets out of the home, wanders down the street, someone finds them, and they're brought back home unharmed. The same type of thing if they wander out of the home and then are potentially... Um, the same type of thing, if they wander out of the home and then are potentially hit by a car, then there's different impact to the child, um, and, and that could be a more severe type of finding.
Does that make sense to me? It just seems like there'd be a difference between, I just, I mean, I'm, I know you were debating whether to leave this in or not, and I'm talking about something that would be even more specific, but so probably adding to it, and we don't need to do that today. But it just feels to me like the person has done the same thing, the perpetrator or the person that's caused this neglect has done the same thing. If they look away and the toddler goes, then it's what happens, it's like a coincidence what happens to the kiddo. It's very serious. But that didn't change the perpetrator's behavior. If the perpetrator is looked away and the toddler left, that's very different than if the perpetrator was on drugs and was not ever paying attention and that was happening every day. And that's why, I, that's why it's hard. I would like for you to be able to make, even if the toddler went away and nothing bad happened at all, if you came back to the home and the person was on heroin, it's a much different level of, now, mistreatment.
Ms. Kemp, I need, um, Ms. Rogers, Ms. Crowell, Mr. Western.
So, uh, this is Peg Rogers. That's kind of, you're, you're talking kind of exactly why the severity levels are there, right? Someone that looks away and the toddler is gone versus somebody that's on drugs and they're nodding off and, and something like that, right? So, then you've got more severe caretaker issues. Another example would be, um, if you have someone who's in a wheelchair and they're in an electric wheelchair, they can't, they can't ambulate in the other way. Um, if a caretaker was to put them in a room and unplug their batteries so they can't get out and they're locked in there for the afternoon, that's physical abuse by our definition, it's unreasonable confinement. If that, that would be minor, they left them in the chair, nothing else occurred. If they happened to fall out of their chair because they were trying to hook that battery back up so they could get out, to that point, then there's some injury there, they fell out of the chair, they may have laid on the floor for a while, now we're looking at moderate. If they left them in that chair overnight, they soiled themselves, got all these other things, now we're looking at more severe.
Ms. McCollum?
I just thought I'd add a legal perspective to your question. It's a very interesting question. Actually, it's very interesting from a philosophy of law standpoint, but I won't get into that. Um, the statute does have a similar orientation towards the harm towards the adult, so, um, mistreatment is defined as behavior that exposes or threatens the health, safety, or welfare of the, of the adult. And so, the structuring of rules with this way is alignment with the statute. Why the statute and the rules both focus on that is a really interesting policy question, but, um, a couple perspectives. Uh, the harm to the adult is often easier to evaluate than the intentions or the culpability of the person's state of mind. So, you could have a caretaker who absolutely loathes, uh, the person that they're taking care of, but treats them wonderfully well and protects them from all harm. That's not culpable and shouldn't be culpable. But you could also have a person who is, you know, delighted to care for, um, an at-risk adult and just fails at their job, and that is culpable.
Ms. Johnson?
What I think I hear Chris saying is, it's the exposure to harm that a prospective future employer would want to know about. And Chris is saying, let's say this person exposes a person under their care to harm repeatedly, but it just so happens, fortunately, nothing bad happens to that person. That is maybe going to be minor, or maybe that doesn't show up, whereas that is something a prospective future employer would want to know about. I don't know how to word that. And you're right, how do you discover, if nothing happens, how do you discover that the exposure happened? If not, if it is exposure to harm, that doesn't necessarily mean any harm's been inflicted, right? Maybe that's what, I think that's what I hear Chris saying. It's a good point, but I don't know how to make that any more clear, but more specific than it is here. I think it would be nice if you could.
Ms. Bush.
So, I think, um, like you, um, what Mr. Johnson just said is actually captured into severity levels because there's an or that talks about changes to the lines, health, safety, welfare, and finances. And I think there's flexibility in those of saying the welfare has been changed or compromised, um, by high-risk neglect, even though it didn't result in harm, or repeated neglect, even though it didn't result in the same level of harm. So, I, I'm, I'm comfortable that the repetition or risk of harm is somehow met, measured, and captured.
I'm also comfortable, especially because we're trying to figure out if it's in line with the statute.
So, Ms. McCollum, um, I don't believe the originating statute here contemplated levels, or do I have that wrong?
It doesn't, uh, it's silent, one word ahead of it.
Thank you. I'm struggling with, with the, with these levels as I, as I think I made clear the last time we all got together. Notwithstanding the or, and whether or not, in fact, that makes it abundantly clear to a caseworker who is ultimately going to need to make this call, none of the definitions contemplate repeated or, or one-off episodes. And if, frauder comes to mind, so everybody has to forgive me, but you're running through traffic, and you're running through traffic, and a truck comes along faster than you're expecting and a splat happens. So, I have a responsibility to monitor a person, a human, for whatever reason. And, in full disclosure, I know enough about, I think I know enough about the system of supports for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities to somewhat concretely to them. There's this thing called line-of-sight supervision. That means that if, if I'm working with Mark, line-of-sight means line of sight. It means that if I need to go into the kitchen to get a cup of coffee, I say, hey, Mark, come with me, let's go get a cup of coffee. I can't turn around, even if I think it's going to take 15 seconds, and leave Mark outside of line-of-sight. The second I do, the nanosecond I do, that's mistreatment. And it doesn't matter whether he leaves the house and gets splattered by the truck moving fast, he is exposed. I, I view the, the universe through, through the lens of binary code, right? It either happens or it doesn't. And I think we're, I think we're parsing here in such a way that it leaves far too much discretion to different counties who have different access to different resources, um, and this is part of the county system that we like, in fact, um, so that folks can make decisions that are, that are contemplated of their community. I'm telling you, this, this rating system is, I have great concerns about this rating system because what looks mild or moderate in El Paso County, um, might in fact in Adams County look severe. And are we prepared as a system, as a state, as a, as a community to allow for that kind of discretion, um, and these sorts of labels to be applied? So, that's sort of my thing. I appreciate the question because I think you're on to something. I think it ought to contemplate clearly if we're, if, if, if the department and the stakeholders and the community say these levels are essential, then it occurs to me that we have got to be unbelievably precise as to their definition so that they are evenly applied irrespective of where that county worker happens to work. Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one of the things that during our conversations with county partners about this, um, we struggled with and we kind of offsite when we started diving into the severity level and thinking about that is that, um, that, that this is based on substantiated findings. So, there's a piece that happens before they would, um, potentially develop a severity level, and that is, you know, based on a preponderance of evidence, whether or not this happened, whether it was caretaker neglect or physical abuse. Um, and so, these are only applied to substantiated findings. So, all the piece around the investigation, the information that goes into making that conclusion would have already happened by the time, um, they're distinguishing, you know, based on that substantiated finding, what's the severity level.
Ms. Bush, can we start with that?
I will share with you that I believe that the enforcement of state criminal laws and prosecution of violations of those vary across the state. And you can write the law the best you can to try and get even applicability, but that may not be a reality, and I think there are limitations that, um, when you write rules the best you can, knowing that they may not be, um, en- enforced the same way across any jurisdiction.
Other comments or questions on the level? Ms. McCollum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Commissioner North's comments because I, I agree, and I think that, um, you know, this is the binary, uh, in, in this case, right? And having those levels, having at least three levels. At first, I was not a proponent of having the levels, but I think I've been converted over based on your, your testimony here. So, I appreciate it, and I, I think it's important for us to create a framework where, um, you know, our priority is to protect, uh, the individual, uh, who is at risk, but then also to, um, create reasonable measures or be able to be accountable.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so those are the, um, primary areas at the beginning of the whole packet that pertain to, you know, feedback we received from stakeholders or feedback, um, from you from the advisory meeting, that, um, we wanted to kind of like, the next section, um, begins on proposed rule page sixteen, which is thirty point nine ten. And this whole last, you know, five, six, seven pages pertains to the whole process. Um, we did, um, I know you all probably received the due process. Um, there was a, I think there was a fair one, in case you want to look at that. Um, and so, we had, um, developed this flow chart to kind of describe what is in here. Um, we wanted to make it clear that this is based on the version that you have today. So, if you were to adopt it in the specific language, this is section nine of today, this is what it would look like in a process. Um, at this time, what I thought might be prudent is rather than us walking through all of these seven pages, if you have specific questions, um, Care Crowell has worked on the child welfare side of the due process for a long time and will be involved with the due process for APS, um, so she can answer questions.
Ms. Bush?
Thank you. Um, this is a lot of stuff. And, and I'll tell you, I, I went through a bit of a process trying to get my mind around it. Um, I suspect you can give as many definitions of due process as there are attorney's licenses in practice law in Colorado. Um, but I think they have a couple of common elements. One is that there is timely notice and an opportunity to be, be heard, and that the extent of the hearing involved vary with the extent of the rights that are being protected. Those are kind of the three things I could find in, in doing some research. So, I, I reread this with that in mind. And, and at the end of the day, I have really only one concern, and that is whether the notice that, that this has been substantiated is not given, in my view, as timely to the alleged perpetrator as due process may require. Um, and I'm not going to be able to find, find it where it is in, in the rules, but I believe it's within 10 days. That strikes me as considerably too long when you are talking about, you know, could be a family relationship, could be any type of thing. And I, I'm wondering, how did we derive that flow of a notice?
And if I can amend Mr. Bush's question to add another element within your answer, if you could respond to it. Is there something that in statute or existing rule that precludes that alleged perpetrator, notwithstanding a substantiation, be in fact advised that they formally, that they are in fact the target of an investigation into mistreatment? If I may offer that friendly amendment to your question. Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, I have two questions there. The first one I'll, I'll address is there is nothing in the rule or statute that requires the department or county in APS to notify somebody where a case has been opened and they are the alleged perpetrator. So, currently, there is nothing in the statute or rule for that. Um, and then to answer the second question, in terms of the 10 calendar days, this is one of the, maybe two or three areas that we did, um, did not copy the child welfare statute. So, currently, there is actually no timeframe, or there's no timeframe in the child welfare rules for when the county needs to notify the substantiated perpetrator that they've been substantiated. We did add a timeframe, that 10 calendar days in here because we thought, well, if we just left it open, they could do it two months later, so we should put a timeframe. We arrived at 10 days, um, as we were having discussions with our county partners because we had originally proposed five days to them, and they said, well, what if Monday is a holiday, our worker's off on Friday, the supervisor approves the finding on Thursday, but then five days would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, they're not back until Tuesday, so they were out sick on Tuesday, you know, to actually mail the notification and send it to the substantiated perpetrator, they would have missed that five-day time period. So, to be honest, it was really, um, in response to counties requesting the flexibility to have a little more time, that they would, you know, try to send it out as soon as possible after the finding was approved by the supervisor. But for those extenuating circumstances where, for whatever reason, they weren't actually able to get it in the mail, um, once the finding was approved by the supervisor, um, they requested that we propose 10 days.
Ms. Bush?
If I may also, let, just to confirm what, um, Ms. Kemp said, I heard from a county in my area that their, their only comment about this was their concern about being able to comply even with the 10 days, given that some counties have, um, one person doing child protection and adult protection, that when it comes to notification of something like this, it might have to go backseat to an actual, uh, child protection case. As an example, most counties have more child protection issues than they have adult protection. So, um, that was a concern that was expressed to me. And, um, also, actually, your component about notice on the front end, um, will, you know, it is, I would venture to say, and please anyone correct me with different information that they have, but it is, it would be the odd situation, um, under Colorado law where there's a requirement to notify someone that they're under investigation, whether it's for, uh, some kind of criminal conduct or whether you're having your, uh, whether someone's reported unethical con, uh, reported, in my case, I can speak specifically, action on my, uh, law license when there was, uh, you know, if someone co, uh, contacted the Attorney Conduct Division and filed a complaint. Well, they don't tell you that upfront. Um, it allows for screening out of the things that really are frivolous or were not based in fact without necessarily, uh, putting someone on the defensive. I think there's value in that, but it would be, it would be rare, or maybe not even existent, that you notify someone under investigation or misconduct that, um, that they were under that investigation.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner North. My experience, um, is a little different to that, and that is that, at least historically, as Rogers will surely correct, because I'll go wrong, I'm certain, but, historically, and again, in full disclosure, I work for a community center board. And historically, community center boards have had jurisdictions for investigations into mistreatment, abuse, neglect, and exploitation. To some degree, some of that jurisdiction remains even after, uh, twelve eighty-four and then subsequently sent along that have sort of combined to create this current one. And in fact, it was an obligation of ours to, um, de facto, in essence, notify the target of the investigation, that's the alleged perpetrator, yet for no other reason than to act to immediately protect the alleged victim. So, that, the, the- So the situation was you are on the side of caution by way of victim protection versus not notifying the alleged perpetrator and potentially on the exact opposite side of that coin you just offered, and I appreciate that, leaving someone who is in fact guilty right next to a vulnerable adult who, in my world, happens to have an intellectual disability. And so we in fact notify the alleged target or the alleged perpetrator, using this language, in order to remove the potential victim and potentially other victims from that perpetrator's care. And so in that case, it was de facto a notification. So my question is, even if it's just for that purpose, why, forgetting about what precedent is or isn't, why wouldn't you do that? Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things. It's not that the county APS program could not notify or should not. It's silent, the rules in statute are silent on this. So in cases where it's necessary to notify the alleged perpetrator or, for example, to remove somebody from a situation and then the alleged perpetrator would end up finding out or knowing that there was an APS case involved, you know, that would happen. But it's not required. So I think that's a little bit of the distinction. And the other distinction is that in a case of a CCB or even a nursing home conducting an investigation on mistreatment that occurred within their facility, they have an obligation to take administrative action and proceed in that way. As part of that, the alleged perpetrator would find out, be put on the bill street or be used or. But in an APS case where we're kind of going and conducting an outside objective investigation, sometimes or often times, it's not actually necessary to notify that person upfront in order to, you know, provide protective services or those sorts of things.
Ms. Busher. I've been thinking about your response regarding the ten days, and I want to go back to that again, if I could. If on July one, I am, on July one, charges against me have been substantiated, and July eleventh, the department sends out the notice, but I don't receive it until July fifteen. In those fifteen days, I apply for a job at a competing care facility. What will they be told?
Ms. Kemp?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to edit through the papers on that.
Ms. Rogers?
So the rules, the rules state that while the appeal is going on, that is still reportable to the employer. So.
So I can be disqualified from a job opportunity but not have yet been notified of the charges against me.
Ms. Rogers?
Not received. That really bothers me. I wonder whether we aren't creating a due process claim that would be very hard to do.
Ms. Rogers?
So technically, that could happen in that short span. That could happen, but the substantiated perpetrator could let that employer know it's under appeal, the employer can then make a decision about that. Karen may have something else.
Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just in response to that, I think that what often happens is that the person that is substantiated for the abuse, neglect, or exploitation has been notified. There's typically been a conversation. I can speak from my experience in the child welfare side, since that's where my experience is. Typically, that person has been notified, there's been conversations, they may have been interviewed as part of the investigation or assessment. This particular part of the rule is specifically talking about the written notification that's sent to them. So usually, they're aware that that has happened. Not always, but usually, they are aware that that has happened. And this is talking about the written notification that they would actually receive with written instructions on what their appeal process rights are, who they would contact, how they would file for those appeals.
I understand. It still makes me quite nervous.
Mark Wester with CDHS. I was wondering, Mr. McCollum, could you speak to the due process, including time on this that Mr. Busher is talking about? And perhaps kind of give us a context of where this language came from?
Sure. So just to give everybody the context that Mr. Busher already enjoys, and I'm sure Commissioner Westendorf does also, due process, very brief constitutional law lecture. Due process is evaluated along a three-factor test developed by the U.S. Supreme Court in Matthews v. Eldridge. The three factors are what's the individual's interest, what's the state's interest, and how do you balance those two together? I think that's a good framework for everybody to be aware of, including stakeholders who want to testify so that they can address these factors as well. So the first factor, the individual's interest, this is the interest of the substantiated perpetrator or substantiated individual at this point. That's a liberty interest, it's not a property interest. So we're not taking money away from them, but we are attaching a label that interferes with their ability to get the job that they want. And that's analyzed as a liberty interest. The interest of the state is, you know, is there an important governmental interest in doing this exercise? And we've heard testimony that that interest is making sure that people who have mistreated at-risk adults don't go through this revolving door into new facilities and perpetrate on more people. And that's been supported as an important government interest, and I think everybody in the room agrees on that. And then the real action happens in that third factor. How do we balance these things together? And that involves some law, but really, a lot of policy. And the courts will look at, when they're looking at that third factor, they'll look at things like, what are the administrative resources that we have to bring to this question? What are the limitations on the ALJs, on the agency staff? How important, it's less a question of how important these interests are, like trying to pit them against each other and rate which one is more important than the other, but really, how do we calibrate the trade-offs that they inevitably require? So, you know, they're going to be adverse to some extent. How do we make those hard calls between which interest prevails at any one moment? So one of the big questions that often comes up is, do you put due process on the front end or on the back end? Do you do, so in this case, do you have the, all the hearing and due process before they are listed in caps or afterwards? And that's, I think a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned the Watzo case. The reason I mention that is because they looked at a very similar question in the child welfare context of when you have, when you have a system like this, does the hearing have to go before they're listed in trails or after they're listed in trails? And they affirmed that it could be listed after, they could be listed in trails even before they ask, which I think equally applies here. They looked at the fact that the liberty interest is somewhat mitigated by the fact that it's a confidential database that's only accessible through background checks. So it would be very different if the Department of Social Services at that time were publishing this list for the public to see versus keeping it in a database that is only accessible through background checks. The fact that it's not limiting individuals listed from any profession, only certain professions. Granted, their chosen profession, and that's not to be discounted, but it's not barring them from any work, for example. They looked at the fact that there had been a previous investigation. So this is not like going out on the street and, hey, David, you're in caps now. It's after there's been an investigation, it's been reviewed by a supervisor, there's an administrative review mechanism at Camburs to QC that those findings, to some extent, resolve cases before they have to go to hearing. They looked at the need for prompt hiring decisions. So if you're in the position of a future employer, can, it's basically a policy decision for this board to make, but would you rather have a long-term care facility hire someone who turns out to have committed abuse and that substantiation is affirmed? Or would you rather have a long-term care facility hire someone or refuse to hire someone who's later exonerated? Both of those are bad results, you know, the false positive or the false negative. I think I got that right. But which one is worse? And that's a policy decision that this board can make. And then finally, they also look at the extensive procedures that happen when the due process does happen. So the fact that it's in front of an impartial ALJ, that there's, you know, it's governed by the rules of evidence, they can call witnesses, they, you know, the extent of that process was also a factor that the Watzo case looked at. So I think, and the reason I went into so much detail about Watzo is I think this board, even though not all of you are lawyers, certainly has the expertise and the policy vision to look at each of those and see how they come out here. Now, in a question about notice that Mr. Busher identified, you look at the same, it's not something that the Watzo case addressed, but you do a similar analysis of, you know, what's, what's the reality of these processes? What are the interests at stake? How do we balance the administrative constraints that an agency APS faces against the risk that a person could be blindsided by a finding? And unfortunately, there's, unfortunately or fortunately, there's no clear, you know, bright line law on that, but the law has given you these sort of tools to analyze that question.
Ms. Busher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to be clear, I do not disagree with the fact that the database gives this information during defendants. I think that's appropriate. I am only concerned that ten-day delay in giving the notice to the person who is alleged to be a perpetrator may not be, may be too long.
Ms. Kemp, is it possible that? Ridiculous question, please forget. Is it possible that the investigation could be conducted, substantiation be the result of that investigation without talking to the alleged perpetrator? Ms. Rogers?
Yeah, Peg Rogers. Technically, yes, but rule requires that they talk to the alleged perpetrator as part of their investigation when appropriate and safe. So, for example, we have had alleged perpetrators who are extremely hostile toward government employees, have a large cache of weapons, and so we're not sending social workers out to interview that alleged perpetrator unless they can get law enforcement to go with them. But there have been times even law enforcement has said, yeah, they don't want to go and talk to this person. So it does happen occasionally, but not often. Sometimes we do have a perpetrator, we're not sure who the perpetrator is, in like scams or it could be something, a situation that happened in the facility, and there's a number of different staffs. And so you would talk to all of them, which would give them that for sure, which would be the perpetrator, because you couldn't narrow down from which of these three staff might have caused the situation.
Commissioner Morse North?
And for, and to kind of finish that out, by definition, if you had three people and couldn't figure it out, no one will write the preponderance of the evidence.
That would be, yeah.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, that would be correct. And so those would be inconclusive or unsubstantiated.
Ms. Busher. At this point, I guess we'd like to ask, are there any other questions on Section nine ten, the last several pages? We really appreciate you being willing to dive into this and do some homework ahead of time and try to work through and understand all of this. So at this point, it's your questionable question, do you have some else on this?
Commissioner Morse?
Just to help me understand the process, in thirty, so this is page sixteen of the proposed rule, thirty point nine ten A, is the notification of the perpetrator the last direct involvement of the county's staff? After that, I assume their records are part of the rec, of the, of the appeal or whatever the next of the process, but they themselves are not responsible for anything else procedural?
Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Ms. Busher, that's correct. The county involvement in the appeal process, the only real involvement that they have after they make a finding is to send that notification. But this new county-level appeal process that we built in here, the information that the substantiated perpetrator will receive will direct them to contact the parent office with their appeal. If they'd like to.
Ms. Kemp?
I would say are there any other questions?
Commissioner Davidson?
Thank you. Could you address the paper that was given to us by the Home Care Association with regards to, with regards to the concerns that are in that paper? So let me just reflect, I think, that that paper contemplates Rule three, Package three. Okay? And so I would strongly urge the department to take both that paper and the paper offered by Mr. Hernandez under advisement as you move onward through this process. But I, but I.
Thanks, Chair. Other questions at this time? We do have witnesses set up to testify. I have a couple, and I'm just, I'm stealing to some degree from Mr. Tappus to testify this morning. Thank you. Unless there's something further from the department, I'd like to invite our witnesses up to testify. So. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Welch and Mr. Hernandez, please join us. This is redundant, redundant, but I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself again for the record and walk us through your case.
Okay, my name is Maureen Welch, and I live in Arnical County. And who speaks is at Page two, right now. Confidentiality, I think, is something that we need to seriously look at. I was at an aging adult sub-act meeting yesterday, and toward the end of the meeting, some of the individuals there, that there's a lot of issues around confidentiality being violated in multiple counties. And Ms. Peg Rogers admitted that there are lots of cases that she knows of, and that they're going to address in court with training. So I know that we can talk about, you know, federal liability, but my concern is if, I've worked as a specialized teacher, working as a CNA, I understand confidentiality. And if APS workers in the state don't understand that concept, it's greatly concerning to me that they're going to be able to tap the judgment to look at severity levels to be responsible. And it really called into question every sudden anxiety that I mentioned earlier in my other testimony. So I really would like to know more about what's actually going on at the counties, but, oh, all of that is behind the veil, so I don't know what really goes on there. Also, the APS task group was canceled both in March and April, so I don't know what they're working on there. But seating statutory authority, I was holding on to this from my earlier testimonies that pertain to Rule Packet two. The severity levels do exceed the statutory authority of House Bill seventeen, twelve eighty-four. Yes, it might reflect child welfare, but we're not creating a child welfare packet here. And I believe it was either this rule or this legislation out that said, if something doesn't work, we don't always want to recreate the wheel, but sometimes we have to. And I think in this case, maybe we don't look to child welfare to create the rules for adult protective services. So I suggest that we cut out of this rule packet the severity levels completely. It's too subjective. I don't know what the interregional liability will be there. Individuals can't even keep confidentiality at the county level, how can I trust them to actually use a rubric that we give them at a training? Right now, they have five days of training, and I guess they're determining capacity, they're determining, now they're going to look at. And I guess they're determining capacity, they're determining, now they're going to look at severity levels, I don't know what else we're going to put on these investigators that affect lives. And we can talk about, oh, there's 20,000 at the beginning of the funnel, and then there's this many at the end. But these are lives we're talking about, these are individuals with liberties, families, people that love them are being affected. So I think even one of those numbers is really important to take. So I really appreciate the rich, thoughtful dialogue here today, I saw a lot out of that. Preponderance is not defined in state statute, it is defined in jury instructions, you mentioned that. The state Supreme Court issues those, can that be added to the rules? Why do we have to guess where it is and have people talk and come up? Can't we just put it in there plain and simple on good definitions? I don't understand why we can't put the definition of preponderance of evidence into the rules. So I don't think we can base substantiation off of something that isn't even defined. If the entire substantiation process is based on a preponderance of evidence, and it's not clear who is defining it and how it's being applied, how can this entire existence of APS exist? And then my last topic or area topic is Section 30.910, notice or notification. The lack of notification at the start of investigation. I think that some of the discussion today reflected back to child welfare, but I'm not sure you're aware of it, but at least for IDD individuals, which Mr. Chair worked with substantially. It's important that we realize that not one person is being accused in these cases around IDD individuals. Okay, they drag in the day program, they drag in the residential agency, they drag in the direct service providers. So around one individual who may have signs of abuse, neglect, exploitation, or self-neglect, you can have actually eight to 10 people involved in an investigation. So I think notification is a really big thing. I think in the provider community, there's a lot of fear around not having the information and whether I should even stay in this field. I know a couple of people have left the field, where they're not going to provide services anymore because there's too many question marks about what's happening, everything is a secret. Also, there's not a clear number of days in which a case will be closed, this is extremely concerning to me. I know a couple of cases, families that have reached out to me, where it's more than six months. They have no idea where they're facing that. They don't know if they're close to determining substantiation or not. They don't know if they're close to losing, that individual losing their guardianship and being taken over by APS. They have no idea, and that's the thing, is it's the not knowing that is really concerning to me. So it'd be really great to have more guardrails. Right now, we have an open process, oh, the investigation is open, the case is open. What does that mean? How many days? What, when will I know? Who's going to tell me? Will be the county, will be the state, all of these things are undefined because the rights aren't given to individuals that are under investigation at the beginning. There's no right sheet saying, this is how it's going to happen, within 10 days, you'll know this, within 30 days, you'll know this, within 60 days. And then once the substantiation is found, you'll know 10 days after. None of that is given to individuals under investigation, and that's very concerning to me. And then the only time notification is made by rule is for substantiated persons. Please, please, we need to strike that perpetrator rule from, perpetrator term from all the rules because it's a judicial term, it's not an administrative term. And the last one is, there is a financial incentive, I'm not sure. I went to the sub-pack and the full pack yesterday, and I looked at allocations and how the counties get funded, which was fascinating as a taxpayer. And I didn't realize that APS has a financial incentive to get guardianship and keep guardianship because that individual counts towards their caseload, and that counts toward their increased funding. So I think that when we look at keeping a case open because of APS having guardianship, whether it's emergency or ongoing, they actually are feeding themselves. And I think that those financial things, I always tell people, follow the money, because a lot of answers come there. So we need to make sure that there's some guardrails on that. Are people going after guardianship to increase their department size? I think that's it for now, so thank you very much, if you have any questions on...
Any questions from this board? So thank you. Mr. Hernandez, one more introduction for the record.
Yes, Mr. Hernandez, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the board. And I don't know how many attorneys are in the room, like, one, two, three, four altogether? I just want to make sure, because I was a juror two weeks ago, and the judge thoroughly walked us through the levels of preponderance, you know. But if you were going to make, you were sitting there as a finder of fact, and he was very clear. When they're doing jury selection and we got our jury instructions, he was very thorough. And he said, that man sitting over there is innocent. And you have to understand that if you're going to sit on this jury, I need to know, and both sides asked, are you, as a finder of fact, are you going to listen to both sides? And of course, if you, and if you were trying a case, whatever side you're on, you want jurors to say, yes, I will listen to both sides, because you want them to be, where's a fact? What's the determination? So none of the, the judge defined what beyond a reasonable doubt meant. The defense did, and so did the prosecution, they defined it, they walked it through. And they all said, that man over there is innocent, just because he has charges against him does not mean he is guilty. Well, I was sitting next to, during the jury selection process, I was sitting next to a prospective juror who said, well, he wouldn't make his life if there wasn't something wrong. He said, no, no, that's not fair, you have to be fair-minded, you have to listen to the evidence. You have to listen to testimony, you have to listen to the witnesses, is there hard evidence? What does it, and so the judge walked us through again, and he said to every single juror, finally, when we got through, and it was interesting because they completely eliminated the front row, I don't know why they did. I was number 12, and I thought, but, and you never know when you're going to get called. But that was my second time serving on a jury. And so it's the heartbeat of democracy, serving on a jury. So when I hear jury instructions, having it been so fresh, and here you discuss them, I know that the court system looks at these things very, very carefully. And so the question did come up, because as the judge walked through it, and he got to the part about preponderance of evidence, he said, I usually hear that kind of cases in automobile accidents. Who was more guilty, who bore the weight more? Was it, was it, who took the turn? And who was more at fault? He said, that generally falls for no fault, or fault cases, like in civil courses, in civil cases. So to hear that, to where you're going to take somebody's liberty and their choice to earn a living away, to me, is going beyond that. You're really saying, well, you know, we're using the preponderance of evidence beyond a reasonable doubt in this particular case, but, you know, we're going to use a lower standard, is what it's saying. And so if it's not in statute, which Representative Busher had asked about, because I don't see it in statute, and it may be a judicial standard, but it's not in statute. So I would just ask the board to be very, very careful with this as they go forward, because you want to make sure, as you had said earlier, you know, what's the... Yeah, when you're trying to make those determinations, are you doing more harm than good? Are you doing more good than harm? And you're trying to weigh those kinds of things. So I would advise, if I could make a motion, I would say, why don't we study this? Why don't we explore this more? Let's talk about this more, let's, what does this really mean? You know, let's bring out, which justice said this? How did the rule come about? Let's explore this more before, you just want to put it in, ooh, that would be my recommendation. And then the severity level, I mean, that's, the trouble with this whole process is that you are guilty until proven innocent, if ever. What's the problem with that? So you stand the caps registration, you know, in perpetuity. So as long as that cap registry is there, your notes about you are in there in perpetuity. So as long as computer systems exist, that will be passed down. You know, 20 generations from now, your family could get a court order and look to see what happened, you know, 200 years from now, and see those notes, if that, if they followed the rules, if this is still around. So that's the determination you want to make, and so on the front end, there's no due process on the front end. So why wouldn't you want to let somebody know, wait a minute, you're on your investigation? And so, wait a minute, the best thing is you get to get an attorney. You get an attorney, you sit down, but we heard Mr. Totten say, Senator Cook said, well, but the individual who was doing the investigation said, well, he had an attorney, so therefore he lost his credibility. Oh, wait a minute, you know, doesn't everybody have a right to counsel? And correct me, correct me, counselors, am I wrong?
Quite personal, Bush, could you address the board and how the audience feels?
Well, yeah, but you kept referring to them, so that's why I'm pointing to them, because if you're using them as counsel to back up your statement, that's why I think it's important to bring these points up. So, but that's, you know, it's the whole big picture, you know, as you're looking at this. So, you know, I just think that severity levels really aren't in statute. They probably shouldn't be there because you're already ensnared. You know, we hear, if there's an allegation made against you, how do you go through the process, the due process, before they get to the substantiation piece part? You should have a right, that's a whole process in itself, not after the fact. So then you try to figure out, how do I, how do you make the determination that it didn't occur? Well, that could be done during the process of the investigation, that's my point. So, and then I want to talk about, you know, at the very bottom of page, page 13, Section 30.250. I asked that question, this isn't put in here, but my question was, if the Civil Rights Division...
Mr. Hernandez, I'm sorry, Chief?
Oh, sorry, on the bottom of page 13.
Analysis page, thank you.
Yeah, Analysis page, sir.
Sorry, I'm going to make sure, staying up. Please proceed.
At the bottom of page 13, stakeholders requested an exception to confidential be added to compel release of APS case record for civil rights investigation. That wasn't, that wasn't the question. The question was, the Civil Rights Division has adjudicatory powers, unless the legislature changes that. So if they, if they put out a subpoena for these types of records, my understanding is that subpoena would have to be allowed. That was the question. So I didn't say that an exception to confidential would be made, the subpoena is a subpoena. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Deputy Attorney General, but anybody that, because there are judicatory powers, that they would have to disclose that. So, but with that, I just wanted to...
It was stated wrong.
So there was no, nobody was asking for an exception, the question was about a subpoena, so. But having done that, I mean, you know, then we get to the top of page 14. You know, when you're not letting somebody know that there's an investigation going on, what rights do they have? You're basically saying, you don't have any rights. You know, there's no due process, Sixth Amendment, you know, doesn't matter, you know. And in some cases, private law enforcement has basically stepped back and said, there's nothing here. So I just want to make those notes, is that as you kind of go forward, when you have, use words like perpetrator, alleged perpetrator, preponderance of evidence, a security levels, those are things I think should be explored more. They could still continue down the road with what they're doing, but I would just ask that the board reconsider this, if there could be more exploration of these terms, what they mean, take a deeper dive into what they are, and not make such a decision, because I sense some degree of, well, we're really not sure, but do we want to? And I'm kind of doubting, but yeah, I thought about it, but, so that would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for our witnesses? Thank you both.
Thank you.
The department, if you'd mind rejoining us.
Do we have someone on the phone who wants to comment on this?
Ms. Ferney, are you still with us? I thought I saw you. Yeah, and so I would, thank you, I appreciate you bringing that up. She has submitted written testimony. It is on your golden rod sheet in your place. If I can ask the department, Mr. Wester, Ms. Kemp, Ms. Rogers, Ms. Crowell?
Okay.
Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Wester appears to be missing. I have a couple of questions. I believe this morning you shared with the board that 3% or fewer of cases result... I strike my question at the bones in classic legal fashion. How many times does APS take guardianship of a person? And the second part of that question is, how long could guardianship last? Ms. Kemp? Ms. Rogers might have an answer for you.
I'm going to give a shot, and then...
Ms. Rogers will correct you, too?
Yes. May I reverse my hands? And so what we had shared this morning... So about 3% of all services, and so one person can get multiple services, but about 3% of all the services that are implemented as part of an APS case for the at-risk adults in fiscal year 1617 were without the client's consent, so voluntary. That's sort of the high level, that would include other things like voluntary hospitalization. And getting on to guardianship, the statistic that we had shared from our data is that in the last two fiscal years, over two years, we provided services to over 14,000 at-risk adults, that's a big group. And just under 150 of those cases, or 1% of them, resulted in a guardianship. And then to further delineate that, only 15% of those 15 specific cases, 1/10 of 1% of the past two years, were for adults with IDD. Does that answer your question, or does that answer your question?
No, I think that answered, thank you.
I'm sorry, what would the other be if they weren't for adults with IDD?
Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that would be all other adults, as you probably remember, the pie chart, going back to the pie chart of the age, age... Okay. So that would be frail elderly, older adults.
16 and 17, thank you. It was 1%, so thank you, that's very useful. In 16 and 17, would you anticipate there being an increasing number of cases that involve an adult with an intellectual or developmental disability this current year than last year? Ms. Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have not seen a dramatic upward trend in counties petitioning and receiving guardianship for individuals with IDD. I think part of that is reflective of the fact that individuals with IDD represent 10%, roughly 10% of the APS clients. So your typical APS client is a frail elderly person. And so we just have not seen a dramatic shift in those numbers.
And Mr. McCombs, I know that jury instructions don't carry the weight of law, but they're pretty darn important. You can refer to suggestion with that specific language. There is a definition, in fact, in the newest version of the rule proposed of preponderance, and we covered earlier that it does in fact find its origins in that Supreme Court... Correct me anytime I go off here, in that Supreme Court guidance. And it is consistent across different sections of not only DHS rule, but I think you also said other rules that you've at least reviewed that contemplate preponderance. Is there, is there specific explicit language that could be used to to detail it even in an even greater way?
So the current language that's in the proposed rule is aligned with both other rules from this board as well as the Supreme Court approved Colorado jury instructions. Judges in the course of a civil trial may give further jury instructions than what is approved by the Supreme Court as an illustration in particular facts of the case. So it is possible to add more language that fleshes out the concept of preponderance of the evidence. My expectation is that the more detail that goes into, the fewer cases it will cover. So it stops being a general definition that county caseworkers can return to in every case and becomes a series of illustrative comments that may not fit the particular case they're working on. So that's a balance that's up to the board to strike. If you want more language developed, I think you can be confident that this language is at least the right place to begin and ask the department to explore further language, if that's in the board's interest.
Commissioner?
I'm going to make a, kind of, I want to cover the five things that I've got listed.
Please try to do it real quickly.
On the issue of preponderance of the evidence, I think it is a term that is well enough known in the law that we should just leave that alone as it is. Secondly, a concern about the use of the word perpetrator, that bothers me also, but that is the word that is used in statute, and I think we are, we're guided to use the same terminology.
I'm sorry, Mr. Busher, if I may interrupt.
I'm sorry, we're having the audio, is it... We'll get the audio fixed.
Yeah, we'll stand and find a minute recess.
What's your favorite section?
An actualessence to concerns about the word perpetrator, and I was going to interrupt you anyway, to ask the department and/or Mr. McCombs if in fact we're wedded to perpetrator. In my experience, and I don't know that it isn't colloquial, we've actually used the word target historically in at least investigating... In my experience, and I don't know that it isn't colloquial, we've actually used the word target historically in at least investigations. None of these words are happy words. And so I don't know if there is some statutory sort of foundation for the use of the word perpetrator, in which case we stick with it or if the department has a, has a position or an observation of, around other language that might be appropriate. Mr. McCombs.
I believe that perpetrator is coming from the statute. As I mentioned at our board retreat, when rule uses different language than statute, there's always some analysis to be done. In this case, I see the risk mainly as one of confusion rather than actual violation of the law. So I think as long as there's a, a robust definition of whatever language is used, that this is the same concept as what has perpetrated in statute. There should be no risk that, for example, the Office of Legislative Legal Services would say that we departed the law. That said, you know, we still have to look at the risk of confusion to administrative law judges, looking at different language in statute versus rule. The type of confusion of caseworkers doing the same. Chair also, I guess, is, I think Mark's team can write, Mr. Wester can weigh in on the administrative implications of overhauling rules to use different language. I know the Child Welfare Rules does use the term perpetrator. It also uses at various stages. Person alleged to have committed abuse and neglect, person responsible for abuse and neglect, depending on, on what stage the individual is in their due process.
Mr. Wester. Ms. Kemp. Yes, I'll call on Ms. Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have heard the feedback on the word perpetrator in the rules. And Mr. McCombs has corrected, there are several references to both alleged perpetrator and then substantiated perpetrator throughout the rules. In addition to that, those are the terms that we use in all of our training, our written guidance and documentation to counter APS statutes. So I would say that if we were to contemplate using a different language for that, that that's something that we would request sometime to really think through, go back, review what other states do, for example, what other programs do, to do a thorough analysis and come back to at some point a future recommendation what changes could be made. I don't think we're in a position today to make a determination on that. In addition, we would like to check with, you know, our county partners to get their feedback on that before making any kind of, you know, changes.
Thank you.
I'm very good with that. If the legislature changed and used language which is more common in other investigations, subject, target, and then you could use perpetrator. But without the legislature doing something, I'd be uncomfortable with, with our rules doing something. Like a couple of folks, I spent a lot of time trying to get my mind around the way we have defined, the way that we have used the results to the injured person as a component of definition. That does make me uncomfortable, but I, I tried to figure out, well, what, what would be the alternative? And the alternative would be to define something like careless, negligent, gross negligent, intentional, and maybe even a fifth level. And, and that seems to me to be even more fraught with peril. And so as much as I don't quite like that, I think it's better than the alternative. And, and lastly, well, the two last things I tried to determine is whether this rule is consistent with the direction in the statute. And I think it is. I don't, I don't find things in here that go beyond the direction to flesh out the statute. And that leaves, the last issue for me is whether this is adequate coverage of due process. And as counsel, it's claimed due process can be, needs to be in some instances before and in some cases after, depending on the harm that you're trying to protect. Seems to me it's appropriate that due process happens here after the investigation. I think generally the due process laid out here is good. The only area that I have a concern is, is in the ten day notice. I've already discussed that. I will not vote against that, this rule, because of that, but I do want to express my concern that, that that may not be adequate notice. There's all my comments.
Can I, comments on anything at this point? Other questions or comments from members of the board? Commissioner Westen, you're up.
So this is a question for the department. A couple of people, including Ms. Brony, says that minors ages eleven to seventeen could be possible perpetrators. I didn't see that anywhere. Do you have any idea where that assertion comes from?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that is part of rule packet three. And I don't know if I wanna get into this right now, but just.
I think that's enough for me to know. So thank you for clarifying that. There was a question about the deadline for how long it takes to close a, I believe the word was case, but really I think you're talking about an investigation as to whether someone becomes a substantiated perpetrator. I, I can understand not liking that limbo. I can understand wanting that incentivizing counties to wrap that up and not unduly delay it is important. But would that, would a person who believed they were subject to this investigation have an opportunity to call the state and say, from the quality control side and say, hey, what, please put some pressure on these guys to clean, clean it up? Is there, what happens if it is unduly delayed?
Ms. Kemp.
Mr. Chair. So a couple of things on it, in terms of the timeline for conducting an investigation. In rule, there is a timeline on, caseworkers must complete an investigation within sixty days. And so if, I would say if an individual had reason to believe that the APS case was open for longer than the required timeframe, or they had concerns about that, I would recommend initially they contact the local county to ask, you know, what, what is going on with this. The county, due to confidentiality, may not be able to respond directly to them and give them details of the case or including the timeframe or even that a case, you know, is open if they were a member of the public. But they would be able to take that into consideration if they're interested in it. The other thing is if they're not satisfied with the response at the timing level, they always tend to call the state without any kind of complaint, including, you know, uncertain about a timeframe of a case. And then I would also say that we do have mechanisms in place, both reports that we pull from our APS unit and then the CBI unit would be looking at different things potentially to ensure timeliness and consistency, things like that. So we have various reports. One that comes to mind is we have a report on activity on a case. So if there's been no movement on a case, nothing added anywhere from a certain period of time, you know, we reach out to the county. So we have mechanisms to ensure that things keep moving. Thank you.
If I could follow from a couple of other.
Please, Commissioner Westen, you're up.
I mean, actually, I'm not too sure how much is question. I heard you say or comment, so I'm gonna jump onto the or comment part. And that is, like Mr. Busher made a comment, comment specifically as to preponderance of the evidence. I'm satisfied that's the correct standard. I'm satisfied that, that that is adequately defined, both here and in the rest of the context of adult protective services. These are, these caseworkers also will be taking cases to court occasionally where they have to prove to a judge to a certain standard of proof. And these aren't gonna be totally incomprehensible to the, on a caseworker, I believe. And then I also am satisfied with the severity levels, and I think they're an important component of this, recognizing, recognizing there may be limitations on how we break them up in that there's pluses and minuses to any structure like this. But particularly from the employer's standpoint, and this kind of ties to some comments in the public comment related regarding blacklisting people. The purpose of the, to me, one of the benefits of a severity level is that it doesn't blacklist. Any employer looking to hire somebody where they have some kind of background check of any kind, needs to know, what were the, what were the circumstances of this incident? Because they're not all the same. It gives that employer an opportunity to inquire about the specifics of an incident. An initial review of application saying if, how they can, how they can really, who still may be qualified to, to be hired for the purposes. So I'm, I'm satisfied with the severity levels and I'm, I think that the input from the employers shows this necessity. And then I think lastly is that I wanna clarify some comments that came in through the witness statements, and that is at least my county has no financial incentive to try to get guardianships. You can follow the money from the state side, but it's not showing you the money from the county side. And guardianships do not make La Plata County any money. In fact, they cost La Plata County money. And they actually tend to be, because of the, the typically never-ending aspect of them, most guardianships aren't terminated due to the person gaining capacity. They might be passed on to someone else who's not the county, but most guardianships are terminated until the person passes away. That's a lifetime thing. And so I just want folks who aren't county commissioners to, to be aware that this is not a moneymaker for us. And that, that's it for me.
This rule.
I had a quick question about the ombudsman, as referenced earlier. And is the use or access to ombudsman, the office of the ombudsman, is that limited to just someone who is at risk? And for, or in this case where we're talking about someone who's suspected perpetrator, can they also access the ombudsman? Or to, to assess where they're at or to get some type of assistance in dealing with a local county?
Ms. Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the long-term care ombudsman, we actually have to be adjusting in my division. We contract a disability law office, the long-term care ombudsman. I guess we also contract with the area agencies on these things, like a local ombudsman throughout the state. And so the role of the ombudsman is, their purview for the long-term care ombudsman is strictly facility-based. So it's all individuals who are in a nursing home or exist in a community. And their role specifically in my area is our state long-term care ombudsman. The way she described it is they're intended to be the voice of, of the individual, so the client, residents, that sort of thing. And so their role is advocate of that individual. So that's the extent of the court. Thank you.
For the comments, Mr. McCombs.
Aside from the long-term care ombudsman, though, counties and the state departments seem to just do have complaints department that anyone can make a complaint to and is our follow-up one.
Ms. Kemp. Some of the timelines are a little fuzzy. It's hard to follow the bouncing ball. We have three rule packets that all combine, supposed to create a framework for, 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 for adults. There's a July one rollout of, there's a January one statutorily defined rollout of the CAPS system in all of its splendor. Is that correct? The process by which APS enters substantiations onto the CAPS system rolls out on July first of this year, is that correct?
Exactly. Close though. So APS currently does enter substantiations in CAPS, that's already happening. What we can't do is due process until, until the rule is out.
Okay. So there, so I'm thinking aloud. It occurs to me then that we are gonna be collecting information and experience data that we're not collecting right now around the application of due process in response to these substantiations being entered into the CAPS system. Yes?
A little bit.
Okay.
Sorry about the nuances. So the, the real timeline issue is that the law statute requires that we cannot report information to employers without the people who are substantiated having due process. So the date that due, due process begins, which we're proposing July first, anything substantiated on or after that date, that is the information that will be reported to employers. So while we are currently collecting and tracking information on substantiated perpetrators in CAPS, that information cannot be reported to employers until that due process starts.
Okay, and so that's, just, Mr. Combs.
And to put an underscore on that, that means that everybody who's in CAPS currently but has not been given due process, they get expunged. So it's a clean slate, July first. People going forward will have due process and those substantiate, and those new substantiations can be reported out in background checks. No one else for that.
Thank you, Mr. Combs, that's, that's where I'm heading. So that as of July, well, between July first of this year and December thirty first of this year, having now installed these due process rights, we will have collected information about everything from numbers of substantiations, how many perpetrators avail themselves of due process rights, what the outcomes of those due process rights will have been. And I hate to talk about it in terms of numbers, but in seventeen, we had fourteen thousand-ish. I guess I'm talking about the possibility of a fairly substantial dataset that we will amass between July first and December thirty first of eighteen as to the effectiveness or not of this process. Is that, is that reasonable from the view, Mr. Combs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we will be getting more information on how the due process rolls out for them. And, and I think the important thing to note is that if you were, for example, to start due process December first, starting January first when employers are requesting the checks, all they would be getting is the results of those substantiations made at this time.
That's not the question I'm asking. I appreciate that observation because that's spot on, but that's not the question I'm just asking. What I'm, what I, what I think I might be getting at, however circuitously, is if we learn in October that the outcomes we envision now with respect to this rule is not, in fact, the outcomes that we are achieving. Either because due process is not as robust as we hope it will be or we're getting folks caught up in the system, really, why not be caught up in the system? Or a hundred possible outcomes. Is the department prepared to take those data logs in real time and make tweaks to this? So I'm sensitive to the concerns that are being expressed, and I need you to hear that. It doesn't mean that I'm not satisfied that you haven't undertaken a good public input process, probably more than is typically the case. The topic is a hot topic, and I think rightly so. I'm glad people are ginned up about this because we gotta get this right. I appreciate the fact that you're, that you're holding these sorts of stakeholder engagements. And I don't want good to be the enemy of the perfect. I fought, as I've exposed to this board several times over, very hard to have some sort of a system by which with only, with fewer than three percent of perpetrators of abuse on people with intellectual disabilities ever facing criminal conviction, it's not okay. But I absolutely wanna be sure that we don't inadvertently and unwittingly wrap up folks into a system that, that brands all of them similarly. And so I wanna know, I need to know that the department is, is prepared to use these six months as a testing ground, as a beta test to see if, in fact, it's doing as we want it to do, and if not, change it. Can you, can somebody talk me off a ledge, please?
You bet.
Thank you.
Mark Wester here. First of all, this is a new system.
First of all, this is a new system. We, it has experienced a lot of enhancement over the last several years in building up a very specific background check process. These rules are designed to get us where there's protection for alleged perpetrators or people who are alleged to have abused people. And then there's operational concerns beyond that. Our responsibility is to implement the law as it is. And part of the rulemaking process is to evaluate over time. The reason, the helpful thing about rulemaking is that over time, as our experience as a department and as we operate this statutorily driven process, it allows us to update and learn from that. I don't know, David, if three months of data is enough to extrapolate what, whether or not it's a good system or not. But over time, as we gather data and as we identify trends that may be problematic, we will address them at that time and we will update our rules accordingly. Is that a yes?
Yes.
I'm secure, this wasn't.
Other comments or questions at this time? Any further from the front? Remove the adoption of document number two incorporating significant basis for purpose and specific statutory authority contained in the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Westendorf, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say a sign. Any extensions? Thank you very much. And thank you very, very much indeed to our witnesses. There is more work to be done. I hope you stay engaged in the stakeholder process. I appreciate the department's efforts and I certainly appreciate the members of the board for their more than passing interest in this very, very good decision.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, closing statement. The name is determined that all rules about the state board human services meet the criteria and is good for the work we are working on. Is there a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Davidson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say a sign. Rulemaking session for table.